Today is Tuesday, June 14th, 2016. The time is 2:10 PM and I will call this briefing meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. First on our agenda, we have Board Member reports from our advisory chairs. Today we'll begin with Mr. Ryan Richards, Chair of the Construction Advisory Committee.
Members of the Board and members of the public that we do have here today. We've essentially had two meetings since my last report and we're taking a break for the summer and won't be meeting again until September. So let me cover briefly the contents of those two meetings. Primarily during the year, we'd been dealing with the high school location, land acquisition, the Benita High School. It's well-known to everybody involved. Since that had come off of our plate, we've switched over to the RFQ process and reviewing some of the district's RFQs that have come out recently and what we can do to help, you know, kind of update the standards with an eye that since the economic downturn of 2008, some of the relative project experience, the standard formatting is going to be a lot more difficult for local companies to meet those requirements now. And we're talking about potentially pushing out the guidelines. Well, if you say who's built the high school in the last five years, well, no one in this town or anywhere in South Florida. You know, so you're only going to get companies that did one in Atlanta and one in Dallas, that type of nature. So we were just, you know, maybe pushing out the timeline, that your normal five-year prerequisites, maybe they're 10 years. Maybe we're a little bit more liberal on the size and scope with respect to that. There just hasn't been a lot of workaround lately. Some of the other issues, there is some legislation that's been proposed. I can't say this was a couple of months ago whether or not it had advanced in the legislature about reducing some of the SREF requirements to make public schools more competitive with the charter school system. And we went through some of those notes, you know, things from, you know, allowing wood back into school weren't a big fan of for a number of reasons. Mostly equality. I mean, while it can help bring down cost, wood is known to deflect and move with age and you don't want walls cracking. And I understand that there's a lobby associated with getting that into the legislation, but there are more common sense items in there as well, things like impervious parking surfaces. You know, if you reduce the number of asphalt, you know, that could help quite a bit with some of the design and even the lighting guidelines when it comes to parking lots. So there are some good points in there that we can go ahead and try to grab at to potentially help reduce construction costs, but you're going to have to take it on an individual basis and we can move forward with some references if and when the legislation gets actually passed. Do anyone have any idea on the status of that? Sorry, before I change subjects again, did it get anywhere or is it still kind of hanging out there?
That legislation did pass in the last session. I'll be happy to send you, Mr. Richards, a copy of that bill, the final version that was passed.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
And one of the recent changes to the RFQ process is some state legislation requiring removal of the local preference with regard to contracts for consultants and contractors where if it's partially funded by the state, I believe up to 50%, then you would not be able to require local preference, which in the past, the district had had RFQs that said you had to have a Lee County business tax receipt to respond to this. They've essentially taken that out. So if the state's funding some of these projects, you can't have that specialty requirement. So instead of throwing out, you know, the entire system and really opening it up and losing all local preference, we had made a recommendation, and I've been working with Mr. Martin in regard to this, is if when you look at the verbiage of the legislative piece, you'll see that it's specific to within a jurisdiction. So you can't require a Lee County business tax receipt. What we've seen other jurisdictions do is attach it to a literal mileage. So say, hey, you're within 50 miles of the project site or 100 miles of the project site. It kind of gets it out of that legislative caveat while still allowing for some sort of local preference. So we're working with Mr. Martin to see if that's really kind of a workaround that can, you know, help with the intent to some degree. So with that said, I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have.
Board members? Mrs. Morgan.
Yeah, two comments. First of all, you may not be aware, but the Finance Advisory Committee is working on a recommendation to the Board that does not, will not require, but suggests it would be a factor in the decision-making process for bids that companies allow for internships of Lee County School District students. So you might consider that. The other thing, other point I wanted to make is that the RFQ process, as you discuss it, my experience in talking to members of the business community, especially in the construction business community, there's not a lot of confidence in the district's process right now as it stands, and it needs to be significantly improved to bring some of the contractors back into the process. So I hope that that recognition is out there also and that some considerable thought will be given to who participates, how they rate, and what will be rated. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Dozier.
Ryan, I want to thank you for, again, for your leadership on this committee. You have done it for quite some time and served on the committee for quite some time. And I know that, you know, to make all these meetings, it is quite a task to take you away from your regular work. So thank you for everything that you do. And this committee, I know, is a very hard-working committee. Dr. Atkins, you and I had actually talked about the requirements as far as contractors' bids and so forth. So I'm going to ask if you will later on kind of address some of the issues that were brought up by Mrs. Morgan, because I know that the process that we currently use, I don't want people to think that there are not people out there that like those. There may be a small amount of people, but I think for all practical purposes, the way that was developed, it is a, it is a process that was actually developed by our local contractors. And it has quite a history and it goes back to the fact that Dr. Atkins and I have been talking about the fact that it, it's probably time for us to bring everybody back in together and let them talk about, you know, what's right with the process, what's wrong with the process. In fact, other districts have actually borrowed our process because it is such an inclusive process and includes everyone, everybody, all the different vendors and everything.
And transparent.
So if you could maybe address that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. Mr. Toyber.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier, and transparent. The fact that we videotape and that the process is so transparent, I think is, I believe our Construction Advisory Committee was very thorough in developing that process that they did, you know, quite a few years back. But I would encourage, I think that now we have some of the same members that can give that foundation as why we did that process and what we, the work that we did, but I think a fresh look is always good because we have a lot, I mean, I appreciate yourself and a lot of the people that serve on that committee have an extensive experience in our construction and really do provide a service to our, to our, to our construct. I know our construction department appreciates it, but the Board does too, because when it goes through that committee, we know it was well-vetted, so.
It's always, you know, difficult because there's no way to factor in of, hey, it's somebody else's turn, you know? That's taken out of the equation. That's bringing in bias. That's, you know, opening a can of worms that's best left closed. And at the same time, you want the best available firm. And well, you know, the 68 Yankees might win the World Series nine out of 10 times. You don't go changing the rules to get someone else to win it.
Exactly right.
So, you know, there's a line in between the two. You want to be fair and open, but, you know, some people are just better at doing these than others.
Good point.
Exactly. Thank you. Mrs. Lavavere here?
Well, I just, I just want to thank you because this has been quite an interesting year for you. And for, I thank everyone on the committee for hanging in there and providing all of their input. And I do agree, it's always good to go back and look at what you got and find the places where there may need to be some tweaks. I know the only thing that I've heard from people in the public is how do we identify those people that will be part of the decision-making process and making sure that there is no, even though, even though you don't know who you're talking about. When you're, I know that when I got information about kids and they'd give me stuff and everything was there, so I wouldn't know who they were, as soon as I was looking at the stuff, I could tell who it was. And so it's very, we need people that, to be sure that those people that are, serve in that capacity are very unbiased and will truly, truly think about what's in the best interest of the district.
Members, any other comments? And having people like you who are in the know, serve on our committees is exactly what we need because your current, you know, you know what's what, and we need to have that information on an ongoing basis. So again, thank you for your diligence and your dedication.
So you do know that if this is your last year, we're wanting you to reapply.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richards. Next, we have a continuous systemic improvement. And Mr. Brian Rist is the Chair. Welcome, Mr. Rist.
Thank you. Before I start, I would just like to thank Dr. Atkins and your staff and the Board and everyone who was involved in it. Dealing with the strategic plan is absolutely a daunting process, but the people that we had in to help us understand the systems among the staff people did an amazing job and it made everything work really a lot easier. And then the participants in the task force were very, very helpful as well. So I just want to kind of compliment you and thank you. I know that often you don't get a lot of compliments, but I can tell you that really, I think from our point of view, you really are doing an awesome job. I recently happened to be at the Horizon Council and listened to a gentleman who was in charge of education for Google, and he says something that kind of was profound that I thought in my mind. And he said that the only way really to solve the poverty problem or break the poverty cycle is through education. The only way to break the crime problem is through education. So it's really a daunting task. From the, from the committee's perspective, we tried to look at the strategic plan and talk about better ways of making a world-class school system. And one of the many items that we discussed was consistency. And I asked that, you know, we give some thought to that in that changing at the top is, it changes the consistency and keeping that consistency will go a long ways in trying to make this thing move forward. And then uniformity, coordinating the efforts throughout the schools so that when you're in the fifth grade in the east or the west, you're kind of learning the same thing across the board. So working more towards uniformity through the strategic plan. We had a discussion and a presentation about technology, which personally I thought was one of the highlights of the year that we had in looking at the Chromebooks and all the things that it offered. And I thought that was, and we thought that was a really big piece and a nice move in the right direction, and we certainly would suggest that it grow and continue. We spent several meetings on the whole teacher retention and teacher hiring issue. And coming from industry, you know, it's a lot easier to keep them once you get them than it is to keep hiring over and over again. And I know those words are easy to say, but looking at the high cost of turnover, trying to find out through maybe an exit interview process why people are leaving and learn about that and see if we can't do a better job at maybe keeping people in and then for lessening the need for hiring new people all the time. While we were speaking about it, a lot of conversation went on about mentoring and how valuable that is in almost everything, all levels, whether it be teacher to teacher or principal to principal or all through staff, that we thought maybe mentoring was a place that in the, through the strategic plan, we could, we worked better at. Coming from industry, we're, we struggle just like you in employing people and keeping, finding new people. And one of the ways that we were more successful and historically proved to be one of the best ways of finding new employees is through the people that are currently employed already. And by rewarding the people who recommend them, I mean, there's a cost in hiring people. So why not reward the people who really understand what it is in the culture of the Lee County school system? So one of the suggestions that we're making is maybe you develop a referral-based program. Another part that we took out of other industries was when you have a school that is a struggling school or a hard-time school and maybe not in the best area, that you look at maybe incentivizing those teachers a little bit more to try to reward them or encourage them to get into that school system. A lot of talk during the year went on about compliance with the 504 and the IDA, and that was a big issue to several people. And it was thought that, you know, we work so hard at our school system, why not try to make Lee County a model for other areas through the IDA and the 504s? The problems that we all are facing are certainly large, and so we're looking at different ways and ultimately, a lot of times, it comes back to money. And so look at different ways of funding, alternative sources, maybe working closer in partnership with business and industry, looking harder maybe at grants and the TIF programs you had seem to be extremely successful. So we kind of addressed all those issues and it's kind of a dynamic, as a strategic plan should be, moving plan. So those were some of the highlights that I took away from the year. As far as looking towards next year, I think that we learned a lot that maybe we should spend more time really understanding and concentrating on the strategic plan and the measurement tools that you used to it and address that a little harder upfront than we did this year so that we stay more focused going forward. And that's what I got out of this year. And I do want to thank you. I did learn a lot and it was a very enjoyable time, and I'll answer any questions that I can.
Board members, any questions or comments? You did such a good job. They were on.
You did a good job, a bad job, but thank you and have a great day.
And we certainly appreciate you. Your leadership has been dynamic.
It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Next, Curriculum Advisory Committee, Ms. Patty Lochner.
Good afternoon. I had to get a head start.
That's okay.
Superintendent Atkins, school board members, and our wonderful Board Liaison Pam Lavavere. We had a good year, and the last three meetings you have, I've given you a quick rundown. We did have some intervention and enrichment follow-up from the February meeting, which was good. And one of our committee members made a suggestion that we create a program that will take student data, et cetera. And he did present that to us in May, but he had, when he, we talked about castle, he had the wrong castle. Not the queen or king, but the wrong castle. So we're going to look at that again. We did, and I remember, said this earlier, but we hadn't passed the minutes yet, make a motion to that we commend the standards-based intervention in Mariner Middle School. And then we also found out that it was a Title I school, so it can't be necessarily at all of the schools. We would like to have that kind of thing, program done at those schools. And there's more information in those minutes for March and in the February. So that was all done. I talked about it at the last meeting, but since those minutes hadn't been approved, I didn't feel that I could put that forward in writing. And then we talked, the coordinators of Fine Arts and Career and Tech Ed talked to us again on textbook adoption for music and art and also for technology. The committee looked at all three texts selected and commended the system that is reused for reviewing the materials, which we've done for several years with all of our materials. Several of us were impressed with the Career and Technology book. We all wanted a copy of it because it had to do with computers and all of that. So we did have a good discussion and we were impressed with what they had done. At the, that was also at March. In April, Dr. Atkins talked to us about the district's standards for excellence. We were impressed with that and liked what we saw and heard, that we need, that we know that the students are getting a high-quality education and are career and college-ready. You know, when we talk about career and college-ready or vice versa, we put a lot of emphasis on college, and I'd like to see more emphasis on career-ready. And I think we talked a little bit about that type of situation. He went through three points, which I have for you. The balanced scorecard has been developed, which includes data on all subject areas and learning gains by level, and looking for a high-quality way to measure our progress without teaching to the test, without teaching to the test, and develop an understanding of how to use testing appropriately. Building the standards so students master specific standards before moving on to the next level. We have tended to not do that, and as a, quote, retired teacher, I've watched that, and we need to do a little more of that. He also, we also talked about that Kevin Baird would be helping the district, and the district would be engaging our community and businesses. The district wants to expand pre-K so that students go into kindergarten more prepared, and it would be a community effort. There's a need to get our culture to understand that time is important and that every student learns at a different pace, specifically three, four, and five-year-olds. As an expert in five-year-olds, I get it. And in an effort to get more systemic in curriculum and staff development, pre-K and ESAL departments will meet once a month so that everyone is on the same page and that other schools can apply for a grant. And I didn't know what the grant was, but I asked the question, and it is the part of the BP settlement. And I think that's an important way to go. In May, Lori Brooks shared the graduation requirements flyer, which was really a thick flyer. Well, it was two pages, maybe more. I didn't bring it with me, but it was very informative. And it's a flyer for parents that includes those credit requirements, for 24 credits, standard diploma options, minimum grade point average, assessment requirements for a minimum diploma, requirements for students with disabilities, scholar and merit designations that students may earn, and post-secondary options students have. And all of that is on the district website, and I urge you to look at that. It was very informative. And not having a child going through high school, I didn't realize all of that, although I will take, on a side note, my oldest grandson graduated from high school last Sunday. And if you recall, five years ago, I talked to you about his 504 for the RIT writing, and it took him six hours to do it. And he did it, he's done an excellent job throughout his high school career, and he's going on to Tallahassee Community College with, to play baseball and to possibly play under his father at FSU. That's a side note, but I'm just pleased that he's gotten that far. We also, Lori also shared the graduation rate data. Federal regulations require the state to calculate a four-year cohort graduation rate, which is an adjusted cohort graduation rate, and each state is required to use the same graduation rate calculation. Cohort is defined as a group of students that are on the same schedule based on the year they enter in grade nine, and if they graduate with a standard diploma in the four years they entered high school. Students that transfer to a different district do not count in the cohort. More information that we had that we had never heard before or had. And so I was pleased that we had both of those presentations. And if you look at the May meeting minutes, all of those, these minutes, there's more information, are online, and you know I say that every time. Mr. Mahone did talk to us about additional tool to enhance castle, but we also found out that that was when we were talking about two different castles. So a motion was made at the end of the meeting to have our first meeting take place August 15th to establish specific task forces and topics. And we talked that we would like to have the three of the topics be castle, process for implementation, and vocational skills, and what's going on in the schools that, in that direction. And I thank you for having had the opportunity to serve as Chair. And any questions?
Board members, questions, comments?
I just want to thank you, Patty, for serving again. And I also want to say that our committee has gotten very excited and wants to do a lot of work. And so they were all highly encouraged, if they wanted, if they, their time was getting, this was the end, to please make sure they complete that application so that if they want to participate again, they will be able to, so.
And I want to thank you. It's been an honor, and I believe I have one more year. And now I'm old. So I would like to continue on after that, but it, you know, it all depends on what's going on, so. But it's been a pleasure, and right now, I'm just a little anxious about what's going on nationwide with what, everything that happened this past weekend. So I thank you for your time and appreciation.
We appreciate you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to Ms. Cindy Crosby for our District Advisory Council report. Hi, Cindy.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, members of the Board, Mr. Martin. I'll just keep this brief as usual, since everything's in the minutes. We've had two meetings since the last briefing meeting. The April meeting, we combined it with the Parent Education Forum, which was a really good thing. Even though I, actually I had a senior that just graduated, so nothing really applied, but I went to the breakouts just to see what they were, and they were very, very informative. I thought it was great. And we're actually going to have our first meeting in September in conjunction with the Parent Education Forum in September, which will be better because the only, the only drawback with having it late in the year like that is, we had heard a lot of that already in DAC. We have a lot of speakers come in, and they had spoken to a lot of things already, but it was very interesting to hear about, you know, the course requirements to graduate, depending on the year you come in, and things like that. Our second meeting and our last meeting, which we had in May, was about the differentiated accountability schools. We had a great presentation by Shayna Fletcher, Dr. Quisenberry, and Mrs. Joy Hunter about Franklin Park Elementary. It was very, very inspiring. It made the high school breakout group, we wanted to all go and see how we could help the school because it was, they do a great presentation. I really didn't know anything about the different, the DA schools before that, so that was great. We're still working on sort of, our main thing right now is attendance. It seems like once we put the, everyone requested that they get their PowerPoints before the DAC meeting so that they could write notes on them. That makes sense. But then, once we started doing that, attendance seemed to have fallen off a little bit because they had the presentation in front of them already. And so that's a little bit, you know, we're trying to figure that out. We'll probably talk about that in the first executive DAC meeting. And the other thing that is a concern is people coming back after the breakout sessions. I don't, maybe they don't realize the value in hearing what the other grade levels that they may not be, you know, a breakout group for, have to say, because sometimes it's all, you know, across all three levels, and then sometimes it's just good to know what the other, what's going on on other grade levels besides the one that you're there representing. That's all. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Well, thank you again for keeping the DAC committee going. You've done a great job, and we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is equity and diversity, and I see Mr. Moore is here for Mr. Ryder.
Good afternoon, Board members. Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. I'm obviously not Joe Ryder, but I am the district's liaison to EDAC. Mr. Ryder passes along his apologies for not being able to attend, and so has- Mr. Ryder passes along his apologies for not being able to attend, and so has Dr. Guido Manaya, who's the assistant chair. EDAC has been once in the fourth quarter, and the meeting topics were District Instructional Recruitment Update, as well as the NAACP Redistricting Proposal. In regards to the District Instructional Recruitment Update, we had Dr. Atkins brief the committee in regards to the district's plan of instructional recruiting. He also mentioned our current employee demographics for all of our job families. He discussed some of the challenges that districts facing, as well as the nation's facing, in recruiting and retaining teachers. He talked about the national teacher shortage, the lack of the local universities producing, production of quality teachers, the competition that we have from the surrounding communities in regards to good-quality teachers, and offering a competitive salary and incentives to keep them here. We talked about the school district's current recruitment efforts, which includes job fairs, Grow Your Own program, as well as the Minority Recruitment Committee, which we do have two EDAC members that sit on that particular committee. We looked at the district's plan to improve teaching quality, which included the career ladder, as well as incentivizing high-quality teachers to work at high-need schools. We also talked a little bit about the support that teachers get, as well as the training and professional development that's offered to them. He did challenge EDAC that they play a pivotal role in helping us attract and retain quality teachers, especially minority teachers. We also talked about the NAACP Redistricting Proposal. We had a visit from the NAACP Local Chapter that included Mr. Fred Morgan and James Milwaukee. They actually talked a little bit about their proposal to go to a single-member districts. They shared some reason and rationale why that would be the best model for Lee County in regards to representing voters and maximizing their strength and keeping folks with a common vision together instead of dividing them through those boundaries. EDAC took a motion, and all agreed that they would support the plan and make a motion that the board also consider looking at that revised plan for redistricting. Those were the topics we discussed at that last meeting. Future topics that we discussed that will be held next school year include in, and continuation of the instructional and administrative recruitment plan, as well as incentive packages so that we can attract teachers and keep them here, as well as the retention rate of minority instructional employees. And of course, ongoing will be our strategic plan for student assignment, as we see the three-year plan evolve, and the EDAC committee will play a very pivotal role in helping us roll that out and get the community support that we need to become a more efficient and effective way to assign students. So, open it up to the committee if there's any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Toibro.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Mr. Moore, isn't the NAACP, it's not so much the fact that they don't want to change any of the redistricting, it's the boundaries in four and five?
Absolutely.
Okay, because they're okay with the two at large and the five single members, they're looking at changing the boundaries of four and five?
Absolutely, to include membership in those boundaries that have like folks.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. LaRiviere?
And a question that I wanted, that I thought I heard, I went to, just so I'm checking for clarification. Do they, did you say they have a revised plan that's different than the one that was presented to us, or no?
It is the same plan that you saw. They wanted to get EDAC support, and that's the reason why they visited and wanted a motion made by that committee. Yes, ma'am.
Board members, any other questions? Mr. Moore, I just have one question. When we're talking about recruitment and retention, I know that we have in our ranks, maybe in our support personnel, people who've, in their native countries, have advanced degrees. Have we made any efforts thus far to reach out to those people, to help them to get maybe certified, or have their credits matriculated here to the United States?
I can't speak of any current effort. I do know when I was in HR that we did have a Grow Your Own program, that we did look at paraprofessionals and others that had degrees or pursuing degrees to help them along in the process. I can't speak to whether or not we have a similar program now. I would defer to Dr. Atkins or Dr. Pruitt if they have any comments in regards to that.
Okay, I'm getting a yes from Dr. Pruitt. I will also say that, you know, we do have the informational meeting that is coming up on the 16th. Okay, it's 16th, and that is going to be highly attended. That is an informational meeting that is provided to members of this community regarding how to become a teacher. So, those folks that have degrees, that have, you know, maybe a credential that might make them eligible are welcome to attend. Bless you. At the last count, or last time I checked with Dr. Pruitt, she had informed me that we have well over 400 folks that are scheduled to attend that event that's coming up a little later this week.
And that's great. I saw that also. How has that been advertised to our existing staff?
Well, if you don't mind, I'd love to have Dr. Pruitt come up and give you that information. She's...
All through social media, and we've been working with priority marketing to get it out there. We actually have now, have so many attending that we have, the boardroom will be full, and the Klu Klux Hachi room, where we'll be streaming it live, because we have that many people attending. And in reference to your first question, we are in the process of targeting those folks you're talking about. We've already know who those people are that, that may not be from another country, but that have advanced, you know, have degrees, and are going to target them specifically. And then, we're looking at ways to bring back and enhance the Grow Your Own.
Thank you very much.
Hey, while you're, while you're there, tell them a little bit about the bus operator informational meeting that you had earlier.
Yeah, that was very well-attended. We don't know what it translates yet to actual hires, but there was about 165 folks that came to that event to learn about what it would be, you know, to be a bus driver. So, once we have some actual data to share about what that translates to, we're going to share that with you. It was very successful.
Thank you. Board members, any other? Okay, thank you, Dr. Pruitt. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, and then we have the Finance Advisory Committee, and I see Mr. Tubbs coming up for Mr. Scott. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. My name is Bill Tubbs. I'm the Executive Director of Financial Services, and Amy said she threw her PC at me if I gave you my countdown of how much longer. But Mr. Scott had a conflict come up today, so he could not get here, so he asked me to cover for him. The Finance Advisory Committee over the past year has divided itself into three subcommittees, and we felt that we've worked very, very well that way. We've covered more things. At our recent meetings, Mr. Moore came and explained to us the student assignment, three-year strategic plan, what's going on there, and as a follow-up, we've invited Mr. Law and Mr. Moore back to speak to the committee about how the proximity, elementary school proximity student assignment might work through transportation and save us some significant dollars for there. So, we're looking at that. On May the 18th, Rita Effing and Brian Graster from Adult and Career Education came and explained to us what their plans are, what they're doing. We had asked, because our committee came up with the idea that possibly some of our auto-mechanic programs in the schools could send their students out to the bus barn to work with the mechanics, get some real-world experience, and she's actually doing some of the very same kind of programs right now. So, we talked back and forth about that to explain, expand that a little bit. Part of her programs is, what was it, nails to, nails to meals, or something, where they're actually encouraging students to learn nail technology, so when they graduate, they'll have a career they can go into. And through that, we, Mr. Scott made a connection with Teaching and Learning and FGCU, so they could discuss the entrepreneurial programs that FGCU has to invite some of our students into that, so that as they get out, they don't have to go to college, they can go right in to set up their own business and what's involved, what's involved in that. Unlike some of the lazy committees that you've heard from already, our committee voted to go ahead and meet throughout the summer, so we'll continue.
Are you going to be a part of that?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to be a part of the summer meetings?
Yes, because we're recruiting him for an open seat on the Finance Advisory Committee.
Here and there. Leading, Mr. Law, Mr. Moore are coming to talk to us about the transportation issues. And Dr. McCullar's going to come and talk to us about grants, how they work, how they can be renewed, what they can be used for. So, we're ranging fairly wide on what we're, what we're trying to do. And our next meeting is tomorrow night. So, any of you who'd like to, we thank Ms. Morgan for being our board liaison, and we'd invite any of the rest of you who would like to come to come sit in with us. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Board members, any questions or comments? Mrs. Morgan?
Well, I'm just going to say, first of all, that we have decided that Bill will come back as a member of the Finance Advisory Committee. We all want him back, and so we're excited to have him come back.
Which district? Which dis...
Ms. Fishers.
Fishers, okay. It's on you, Mrs. Fisher.
It's on me?
To appoint him.
Make sure you appoint him.
Okay, okay.
Look for that application.
I would be happy to do that.
Pressure here, but...
The other thing I will say that Mr. Tubbs alluded to, and he and Kelly have been terrific at bringing in staff. You know, when, when our staff presents to these committees, they make such a great impression. The community has no clue how much depth and breadth of knowledge there is, how sophisticated and contemporary the thinking is. And so, to the extent that we can showcase staff in the various committee meetings, I think we introduce the community to the quality of, of staff and program we have here in the, in the school district. And Bill, you've been great with that, and we are going to miss you on the committee. Well, we're not going to miss you on the committee. Anyway, thanks for your work this year. It's been a lot of work, but you've done a great job.
Thank you. Mrs. LaRiviere?
And yes, we are welcome to come and join, and I'm curious if, I want to go, so I'm going to have to talk with Mr. Scott or Ms. Morgan to find out which meeting you're going to have this summer that will show how you guys work in your different groups, because, and so to see how, so I want to come, make sure I come visit.
She wants to come on a workshop day.
It will not be this next one, but the one after that. Well, I'll see that you're notified.
Thank you.
Mr. Toibro? Okay, and the only thing I wanted to say was, again, with our advisory committees, it enhances our opportunity to educate the public, and it also helps to create a feeling of more transparency when people get the information, you know, about what is really happening in each one of our departments. So, thank you so much. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Denise Carlin, who is going to lead us in a discussion, I believe, regarding annual board priorities and onboarding procedures for new board members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and joining me this afternoon will be Mr. Mark Moore to assist with this work. So, good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. You are receiving some information that we are sharing with you. It is in draft form, so we hope that this will be our initial discussion relative to our school board priorities for the upcoming year, as well as a follow-up to our discussion in March relative to onboarding new members for the fall. So, that's the scope of our discussion this afternoon. We do want to acquaint you with the items in the packet as you're receiving them. The first item is a draft, and again, I want to double, double underscore, proposal draft of board priorities. Behind that, you'll notice a schedule for some proposed workshops, and we'll talk about that. We want to bring it to you for your consideration. The third item has to do with a timeline relative to onboarding new members for the fall. And then, finally, there's a packet. It's actually an excerpt of the onboarding, or excuse me, the operating manual for protocols and procedures. We just pulled out the items relative to onboarding as appropriate. So, we want to jump into an initial conversation relative to the school board priorities. As you'll see in the first handout, there are five proposed priorities. We are stating that we are limiting them to five, but that doesn't preclude us from adding more or less, making substitutions. We feel like five may be a workable number. Sometimes, if you make everything a priority, nothing becomes a priority, so we want to make sure that they're doable. You might be taking a look at them and saying, how did you arrive at these suggestions relative to these priorities? Well, there's actually two things we discussed. One was the review of the school board's self-evaluation, and you'll remember, we were engaged in a conversation back in March relative to that. We also have been listening carefully to discussions in which the board, the superintendent and the staff have engaged relative to the projects that are aligned to the strategic plan. So, since Dr. Atkins has joined us as our superintendent, we have a number of initiatives, a number of projects going on, and so we wanted to capture that work as well. So, if you take a look at the proposals, you'll see that they revolve around a couple of themes. The first one, looking at enhancing processes for safety and security, certainly continuing our work relative to communication. We know that there never is enough communication, and we always want to get better and better each and every year, so we continue to target that. We know that our capital funding has been an issue, and we want to continue to look at our comprehensive plan relative to our capital funds. Looking at our processes and continuing to enhance, you heard a lot of great things from Dr. Pruitt this afternoon. Want to continue to focus on recruiting, hiring, and retaining the very best talent. And then, the fifth area, which we've also heard a little bit about today, is that alignment of curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and making sure that's all aligned with our professional development. So, at this point, those are in draft. It is for your pleasure to be discussed, and we'll turn it over to you at this time for some initial discussions. And I do want to make a note also, if you look at the second handout relative to the workshop dates, that we have starred a proposed workshop, July 26th, if that meets with your pleasure. That is a recommendation we're bringing forward to have robust discussion, more extensive discussion about these, but that is for your pleasure and for your discussion today.
Great, thank you. Mrs. LaRiviere?
Just one, just, just one of the things that I think, when I look at the goals for the board, there are two, there are two sets of goals. There are goals for what we want to see happen with the school district itself, but part of the goals for the board also needs to be things for the way we set goals for ourselves as a board, for components we want to see ourselves accomplish so we work more effectively. And so, I want to, I'm, I believe that's an important part. That was one of the key things that came through with master board training, that we need to incorporate that, and so I'm just putting that out there.
Mrs., thank you, Mrs. LaRiviere. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, looking at this, I would say that two and three are really what our board responsibilities, and one, four, and five are really the responsibilities of the superintendent, but we want to make certain that, because they're important to us, we have an opportunity to be brought up to date on where these things stand. So, I think, for me, we still haven't had a conclusive conversation about what's a briefing, what's a workshop, can we have more workshops to talk about the things that are specific to our work, and can we help the superintendent organize workshops and briefings to make our time and his time more productive when we're, when we're scheduling these meetings? So, that is, that's my reaction to this.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. Dozier?
Well, and I'm going to speak from past experience. When we go back and look at some of the priorities and goals that the board has had in years past, there is, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, it is imperative as a board that we have something in here about student achievement. For instance, create policies which will increase in, you know, student, student achievement in reading and math, what, you know, whatever areas, you know, our focus is. I know we've had those in the past, you know, where we had something with reading, we've had something with math, and I think that, you know, that certainly is our responsibility. We need to make sure that we are creating policies, we're creating a budget that focuses on those areas of student achievement, because that's what we're all about. And there's... And there's really nothing in here about student achievement. And first and foremost with me, that's the reason I'm sitting here, is for student, you know, for students to succeed, for all students to succeed. I know it's also very important, you know, for us to improve communication between and among the school board, but in here, I think we would, I think it would behoove us to say something about improvement between the school board and the superintendent. We need to add him as part of this team. And please don't, I mean, you know, this is our first blush at this, so...
Absolutely. This is what we want. We want the good feedback. We need your feedback.
I'm just simply, you know, because I know how much work you put into this, and I certainly appreciate all the work that has gone into this. And of course, when you meet with us and we all meet together, we're all over the place. You know, it's like herding cats, and I know that, and I borrowed a comment that Mr. Toiber loves to use, and I realize that. And as we move to a seven-member board, it's going to be like herding more than just cats. It's going to be multitudes of cats, because it's going to be such a tremendous transition from what the culture has been, because everyone has been used to a five-member board. And the dynamics, when you change the size of a board, are absolutely tremendous. So as we plan, and now I'm moving to the page where we have board priorities, and it's my understanding that on this page of, on the 26th, we'll be discussing what our, we'll have a continuing discussion of what our priorities are. All right. When we move to the 15th to the 16th onboard with new board members, all right, this would be a time for the new board members, which will have been elected. They will not have been sworn in, but they will have been elected. And I'm going to tell you, 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM, 1:00 AM, it should be 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM, actually. Nine to one is not enough time.
Exactly.
That, it needs to be a full day with those individuals, because one of the expectations that I have as a, as a new board member is that we have, from you, Dr. Atkins, we have individuals that will, we have to give comfort to these new board members, whomever they are. And we need to make sure that in that training, and it's going to be a marathon of training, you know, it's going to be like that guy we heard that did how many thousands of miles over the course of, I mean, that's what they'll feel like at the end of the day. If we do it right, that is the way they will feel. We need to have somebody from finance, we need to have somebody from curriculum, we need to have somebody from, that oversees student surfaces. We need to have all aspects of the organization. We need to have these individuals lined up, boom, 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 boom. And to give these individuals a, somebody, did I say budget? Okay. But every aspect of the organization, transportation, I left that out, that's a biggie, but somebody to kind of say, "This is how we do things, this doesn't mean it has to continue, blah, 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 blah," so that these people can have a first-rate insight. I don't want to leave you out. Don't feel lonesome down there, Mr. Martin, because I want to put you in the mix too. And, you know, when we come on to the school board, it's a whole new world. You know, you may think you understand the sunshine law, but I learn something about the sunshine law all the time. I mean, I think I'm really well-versed on it, but continually, there are things that change, that make things change for us, and so you need to be prepared also to do some kind of a, and I know that you meet with them individually and so forth, but the rest, the rest of the board, it's good for them to hear your refresher course that you do. So I'm just saying that this is something that, that is important as we move forward and plan, that we have adequate planning. And I'm just going to tell you, I remember a few years ago, when I first came on the board, I believe we, if I look back, I think we might have had a day and a half or a two-day training. I'm not suggesting that, because it seems like we left early. We even brought, we even brought somebody down from FSBA to tell them about the organization, what the organization offers and all of that, what the benefits are and so forth, because, you know, there's a lot of fodder out there about, oh, you know, this, that and the other, you don't need to do this, you know, because these people that are going to be new to the organization, they've been hearing a lot out there, and, you know, they're going to have to kind of size up what they need to take with them, what they don't. We need to give them the opportunity to pick and choose what they want to. And the only way that we can do that is by educating them and providing them all of the tools in the background on this. So that's where I'm coming from with all of this.
Mr. Toiber?
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And I guess I'm a little bit, I take this as a little bit different. When we talk about the priorities of the district, of the board, I think those are board, those are good things to have priorities. However, I think sometimes when I read these, to me, I get really uncomfortable, because we have one function, and that is to set policy. And when you read these, you know, all seven of them, and I disagree with Ms. Morgan when she says that a couple of them belong to the board and a couple of them belong to the superintendent, they all belong to the superintendent. When you talk about, number one, enhancement of a process, we don't develop processes. We don't say the how. We say the policy as far as this shall be done. It's the superintendent's responsibility, unbridled with us, we don't tell him how. We don't, we tell him to bake a chocolate cake and it's got to taste like this. We don't tell him the ingredients, we don't tell him the temperature, we don't tell him how long it's in the oven. That's not what we do. That's crossing the lines. When we talk about improvement of communication, we don't, we don't develop improvement of communication. We can set the metrics and say that it needs to be done, and we can set policies to say it shall be at this certain level, or our policies to, as far as what, how it can be done policy-wise, but as far as the implementation of the communication vehicle, that's the superintendent. Same thing with a comprehensive capital plan. We can dictate what our needs are on a capital basis based upon policy, but as far as to say, to tell him how many buses he needs to have, that's not our job. Or to tell him he needs to put, do chillers before he does buses, that's not our job. So, you know, we, we have to be very cognizant, and I, and we go there a lot, you know, you know, for, when we talk about things, for example, you know, I want to see, you know, as we're talking about how we spend our money, I want to see validation and verification of every cost that we do by activity. You know, those are the type of things I want to see, how that's done, that's the superintendent's job. But if the rest, but if this board says, "We want to see that, that we know that everything we do, every dollar that's being spent is validated and verified," that's what, that would be setting the policy, saying, "We want to have that done." How he does that mechanism of doing, going through that process? Or, you know, my biggest one that I've got right now that's, that's eating at me is identifying waste, you know, where we have waste in our district, how we do a plan for reduction, and then the tracking and recruitment of the dollars. And I'll give you an example. We're talking about teacher retention. We talk about losing 500 teachers, you know, a year, and you talk about the numbers of losing 500 teachers at 20,000 a pop, it's millions of dollars. And you say, "Well, we reduced that by 40 percent." Okay, that's, that's good. That's the, identifying the waste, making the plan, but where'd those dollars go? You know, if we just saved on the ALC, we just saved 2.2 million dollars, where's that money? I want to identify, tag that money, just, I don't want it to just be absorbed in the general fund. I want to say, "That's where the money, this is the money we saved, and we're using that money for this. That money's going back into the capital plan to buy more buses or whatever." We got to have that money, and that's the same portion when we talk about the same thing that the cap, that the county budget's doing with their appreciation of land values. They did it in a particular instance by grabbing that evaluation dollars, that first initial dollars in increase of value. I think we need to do that, but not just do it for that particular aspect of the evaluation of, of property, but every cost-saving measure that we do, that we drive cost-saving metrics in the district, we take those dollars, we recoup those dollars, and we can apply those dollars where we need it. And, and it may be as simple as putting it back into our, in our most, you know, more needful schools, or in our, in our technology program, you know, or unfunded technology mandate, whatever it may be, but those are things that the business community and our taxpayers want to know, where's this money going? And so, and we don't have the answer. So I, I think, you know, for us to identify, those are priorities as far as what we want to see, and then Dr. Atkins uses those priorities to develop how, what he's going to do and how he's going to do it. And then that's what they report back to us on briefings, and I think that goes back to Ms. Morgan's question as far as what's in the briefing and what's in the, you know, in a workshop. I think that, you know, our briefings are driven by our priorities, and that he's responding, his briefings are responding to what we dictated as our, what our priorities, what we want to see as far as improvement in the district. So I'm a little bit different, I think, but I just want to throw that out there.
I'm just going to comment real briefly. You know, I think as a school board, we have an obligation to set policy, and also, in my training with FSBA, we also have a responsibility to oversee the operations of the district.
Exactly.
So we need to know what's going on, like you just illustrated. We need to advocate for students, that's part of our job, and to communicate with our public. So in order to do that, we have to have a very clear, consistent, effective way of communicating with one another, and the superintendent, who's part of our team, and with our staff, who help us to gather the information that we need in order to do a good job and respond to our public. So I guess my question is now, then, what are our priorities right now? I know that we have a strategic plan that we approved as a group. I know that we have our protocols that we worked on, thank you, Mrs. Dozier, and approved as a group. So using those, I mean, I, what are our priorities now? And this is a draft, a suggestion of what our priorities could be for fiscal year '17. So I think that using all that information, it's incumbent on us to communicate and to identify those things that are true priorities for us as a, as a group and a team with the superintendent. And we need to do that, all of us together, with the support of staff. So, okay. Mrs. LaRiviere, I think you were next.
Yeah. So as I look at what's here, I see one, three, four and five as priorities that are district-based, along with, excuse me, along with what Ms. Dozier mentioned regarding making sure we have a component there for student growth and achievement. I look, that's how, I look at those pieces as what we, priorities for what we want to see happen. So I don't know who we, you know, but then when I look for us, as for us as number two, with regarding communication, and it's, and it's beyond even communication, it's that whole how we work as a team. And so as I look at the goals for the board itself, it goes along with what are we doing as a board to make sure we are overseeing what's happening? So I, so in my mind, I'd already been thinking, improve our governance, you know? We need to make sure that, that all of us, including new board members, feel comfortable to know at what point, how much we ask for that information, and how much we check, so make sure that we're doing it appropriately. And also, training and development, so we are better at our policy decision-making. And also, improve our collaboration and team building. What I find is a frustration right now is when we come to our briefing meetings and our action meetings, we have our comments that are about what happened on, for action meetings. We comment on what was voted on and our public comment. At our briefing meeting, we share the different components that we've been involved with, or any projects or something that we have an idea for, so to speak.
Would you repeat that one more time?
Yeah. So at our briefing meetings, and I have my piece here that I was looking through, and I'm, so I'm using my own words, but when we look at the briefing meetings, we share the different things that we've been doing as a board member.
Right.
And, I have to find the page. Where's the briefing meeting page? Do you happen to have your...
I don't have, I don't have that product. Are you looking at protocols?
Yes.
I don't have mine.
So, so when I look, when I look at that, I was noticing that beyond, here we are. And at those meetings, we share what we've been doing, and we share that participation. We also have questions or concerns and interact with what takes place at the briefing meeting. And then, then it also said, inform board members ahead of time of your intentions to bring up something new or items for future discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And provide something in writing or a draft, if possible, to help guide that conversation. But it, it's only through a workshop that we really have time to discuss and put forth that, that time to, whether you want to use the term hash some things out, or make sure we have clear understanding, that's our time for actually full engagement and discussion because of the time element. Our briefing meetings, we, it's very hard to go on with those conversations and discussion just because of the time element. So those are, those are just some thoughts that have been in my mind regarding that we make sure that, and a workshop. I really appreciate it if we have our workshops more than we're not at the dais, at the dais, that we have that opportunity to be around a table for those conversations.
I couldn't agree more.
And, and that we actually work.
Yeah.
There, there needs to be work that takes place and change that takes place, whether it be changing growth in myself as a board member, or changing growth in us as a team, changing growth for us as a school district. So those are kind of my thoughts. And also, when I look at the dates for the onboarding for new members, I see the need for a workshop, for doing that prepping ahead of time to make sure, to review protocol, make, you know, make any adjustments that we feel like we need to make, and then do our, and do our part to help plan so that onboard training is, that we, I know other people will be leading that, and, but that we're all doing our best part. So that's just, those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, and then Mr. Toiber?
My apologies. I should have framed this much better than I did. This was not the intent to get into a discussion regarding priorities today. Really, what, what we wanted to do was just to take information that had come from the March meeting, provide it to you in the best format we could based on, on that meeting, and then set a time to talk to you about setting up a time to have that discussion. What do you need for us to have in the room for you so to have, so you can have a productive discussion? Who needs to be there? What information do you need in the room? Where would you like to have, those types of things? That's really what I was trying to get to today.
This was to meet the request, the request that was requested by the, by the board.
Right, right.
Right. And it helps get us going kind of where we're, can talk, talk together to see where we feel like we need to be, what we feel like we need to be doing.
Mr. Toiber, then Mrs. Morgan?
I have my hand up, but you just, I don't know.
You've all had your hands up.
Yeah, I think we all have.
Okay. Yes. And I, yeah, okay. All right, let's, let's just come down the line then. Mr. Toiber?
No, I, I, I was just, this was just Dr. Atkins and my attempt to get what the board had requested at the last workshop, a time to be able to get these priorities, to just start the process going, to figure out where we wanted to go, how we wanted to frame, to set the, to be able to set the priorities for this board. So it's really not, I mean, so Dr. Carlin was just kind of trying to get us out there to get us, you know, as a, as a starting point as far as where do you guys want this thing, where the process to go, more so than delineating or identifying actual priorities. Is that correct?
It's all good.
And this is a good start, because it's prompted a conversation that really needed to happen. So now, Mrs. Morgan, and then Mrs. Dozier.
Well, okay, I guess I will hold my comments until July 26th. That's when we're going to have our workshop, right? That's when we're going to have our workshop, right? Okay. I'm good.
Mrs. Dozier.
Well, I am going to kind of sum up some of the things that I've heard everybody because I want to bring us all together. I think that one of the things that everybody at this table has said, basically, we're all talking, we're all wanting the same thing, but we're all talking different language. And I think everybody here is agreeing that we need to do this, but we just are speaking in different languages. So I think as we come together for our workshop, that will be part of what we all do. And it is much easier to do these things at a workshop than it is. And every one of these things that you have put forth here, it is very easy to change the language and the language to be create, um, a process for blah, blah, blah. Create a capital plan, you know, create policies for a capital plan, blah, blah, blah. I mean, every one of these things, you know? So your work, well done. And I, I just want to be sure that it's noted that we do have something in there about student improvement because while all of these are very good, our student improvement is one, is the most important thing to me.
Thank you. We've made a note of that, very important, that we actually put that toward the top.
Thank you, because this is a very good start. And, and what comes to my mind, and maybe because I'm a more global thinker, but number five, for instance, the alignment of curriculum instruction and assessment and professional development to our strategic plan as evidenced by student achievement. And I don't think that a, a board goal has to be the kids will do this in math. That's part of the goals that's in our strategic plan. So what we need is to be sure that, that, that strategic plan is being followed, that we're informed of updates to the strategic plan as it is a work in progress and that we do review our own protocols because I think that's where we have fell down some in not honoring those. And maybe it was because it was too cumbersome and we need to go back and look at it and really isolate some specific strategies that we as board members can use so that we're on track, especially as we are going to be expanding to seven members. So do we then, at this time, want to answer Dr. Atkins' questions? Like what do we need when we come to meet on July 26th? What do we need in the room? What information do we want? Do we need a facilitator? And, and, you know, what are we looking for? Okay. So do we want to just revisit that? And then we have probably about 10 more minutes and then we're going to need to move forward with our agenda. So comments. Okay, Mrs. Dozier.
Well, I definitely think that we have a most capable person who can, can, has already demonstrated that she is able to herd all of us. And I'm sure that she will be able to herd when we move from five to seven as well. So I think that this is a, a good beginning and I think that the main thing that we need for that workshop is to continue the conversation that we started here at the table. And I think also it would be prudent if we, if something comes to mind when we're away from the table, we can either email it to the superintendent or to our secretaries and say it might be helpful if we have so-and-so because that's a process that we've used in the past, just simply saying, you know, it might help if we have this, it might help if we have that. And I think that would bring us all to where we need to be when we begin that, that's going to be a marathon day.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Dozier. Now, Mrs. LaRiviere.
Yes, and I, Ms. Dozier and I, and I just saw the note that we need to all be speaking in our mics more carefully from Ms. Benzinger. I was looking in my email to see what I had sent for, for things that I felt like we needed to discuss. But I think part of that, along with Ms. Dozier, for things that we need, we need to think about, not be so broad, but to think about essential topics that need to be dealt with like the consortium in September, like, um, whatever other components that are the most essential. And so I get, I guess, as we look at that, I'm just suggesting if there, there are key points that we need to make sure we include that in the conversation for the day.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan.
Yeah, I, I want, I would like to have a facilitator. I think it helps us. That means everybody can participate. I also think that it would be helpful since Mrs. Car, Dr. Carlin is the one who's sort of pulling this all together. If individually, we just sent her a list of things that we think are important or we would need whatever for the, for the conference. And, and somebody just let me know that I, I cannot be available on the 26th. So just calendar conflict.
You're not available?
No.
Well, then we pick another day. We've got to have everybody here.
Yeah. But I think that's something the staff can work on. We have plenty of time.
Staff work with us on our calendars so that we can all.
We would be very happy to do that. We can coordinate with Dr. Atkins in the interim. Yes.
Board members, any other comments regarding our priorities and the onboarding? Thank you very much.
May I ask a question, just a clarification on the onboarding for the new board members? I want to make sure we have clear direction for proceeding. The recommendation was two half-days on either November 15th and 16th or November 21st and 22nd, putting those together to make a full day. If you would like us, we can make that a full day, like an eight to four or eight to five or nine to five. I just wanted to hear the, from the board. I heard some suggestion around a full day and I'm, we're pleased to do that. If you'll just give us some direction on which date you would like to do that in November. If that works, we, we are open to that discussion.
And board members, Mrs. Dozier.
Well, and, and I'm just going to again go, in the past, what we've done is we've given the courtesy of the new board members on the day that they are elected not to have a full day of meetings. And I think our reorganization meeting is on the 21st, I think?
Twenty, I believe it's the 22nd if I'm not mistaken. That would be a board briefing at 1:00 PM.
Whichever one of those days are Tuesday.
And then an action meeting at 6:00 PM.
So I think that the election, I think, is on the 5th or the 6th. And I think that my druthers would be that we do it on the 15th and 16th because that would give them a chance to kind of get some things completed. Now, that's just my druthers. I don't know how y'all feel, but, you know, people that are newly elected, they need some time to get, you know, to complete some things and, and get some stuff done. And so I think that, that that would be kind of in the middle and it would also give us an opportunity to, to, um, to not have that day that we are going to also have swearing-ins and having all that stuff. I just, that's my druthers. I mean, that's, I think would be in the best smart of everybody concerned.
Mrs. LaRiviere?
Oh, no, I was just, I'm just looking for something. I have nothing to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Toiber? No. Okay. So, Mrs. Morgan.
Yeah, so I think two days. We need two days. I also think that it's mentioned in here that there's an orientation. I don't think we should be doing an orientation as a board with staff. I think Dr. Atkins should be doing an orientation with board members, new board members for the various departments in the organization. For example, if somebody in District 3 there will prob, in all probability, be a winner in August and there's no reason staff can't start to work with that individual and if others are elected then as well. And then, so that when our time is spent together, it's spent working as a board and not trying to educate and orient people. So that's my comment.
Good suggestion. And Mrs. Dozier.
Well, and to that comment, we have had several new employees in high-ranking positions that have been added on and a lot of us have not heard what their perspective is. So I think it would behoove all of us as a board. And in the past, we have done that where staff has come in and we all will be hearing the same thing because these new board members, if they sit with different staff members that have been hired and the rest of us don't do that, we may not know, in fact, what their direction is, what, you know, they have and so forth. So.
Something I added.
Oh, okay. Um, I wanted to check you out here. Anyway, so I, I would prefer, I, I like for everyone to hear the same thing. I think that's important. And Dr. Atkins and I have had this conversation before because we're all hearing the same thing. We also have the opportunity to, to ask questions because you might think of something that I haven't thought of and I go, oh, yeah, what a great idea, you know? And it, you can't communicate that to me, you know, if we're not doing it together collectively. So, you know, that's, you know, that's a benefit of us all being together. And it's also a benefit of us, and I don't think the time is wasted, but instead I think the collective minds coming together, we can also get an idea of where these new board members are coming from. And we know that we are going to have at least, you know, one, I think, or two?
Two.
Well, at least one because there are two non.
Yeah. So at least in one race, we're going to have one new board member. And then in the other race, we might have a returning one or somebody that's been, you know, so. That would be what I would suggest.
And I understand. I think that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Did you have anything else?
So just to clarify, November 15th and 16th, do we want to make that nine to one? Do we want to expand that time? Make it two full days? I just want to be really clear on what we're, what we're requesting.
My druthers would be all day, one day.
One day.
And, and then schedule for the next day if we need to have it. And if not, we would cancel it. And I will again say, in the past, we have done that and it's worked very productively. And I will also tell you that we also went off-site so the superintendent wouldn't have multitudes of interruptions.
Very nice.
That's just a suggestion to.
Just confiscate the phones.
Great. So then, okay. And then we're going to reschedule the July 26th, right? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for all your work, both of you.
Okay. Moving right along, executive services. Dr. Atkins, did you have something you wanted to say before we introduce the student progression plan pre-briefing?
No, just, uh, just the three individuals that will be presenting it. Melissa Robery, Brandy Mackia, and Lori Brooks. So welcome, and I will turn it over to them.
Great.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. We're here today to brief you for the first time on the edits to the 2016, 2017 student progression plan. First, I will tell you, in response to stakeholder feedback, to improve the, the ease of use of the document and to reduce the replication of information, we have taken the student progression plan, the high school program of studies and the middle school program of studies, and we have compiled it into one very easy-to-use document. So our student progression plan now includes the district course catalog, which was formerly the program of studies. So that's the first change that we'd like to tell you about. Secondly, I will tell you that the updates for 2016, 17 include academic policies and courses aligned to FLDOE updates, state course code directory, and the focus scheduling system. So once again, this year, the scheduling system that all of our assistant principals and APCs are using has been completely aligned to our course catalog document. Course requests were submitted by schools and all of those have been reviewed and added to the document as appropriate. We have, um, we opened that opportunity up to schools in January. So they have from January till about mid-May to talk with their students, talk with their parents, talk with their Saks about the kinds of courses that they'd like to offer, the kinds of electives. And then they, if that course is not available in the, currently in the course catalog, they are able to request the course. This year, we received 62 requests from schools for courses to be reviewed for the catalog. Also, per board request last year, we have added a middle school special programs page that mirrors the high school program page that was previously in the document. So we have added a middle school document and it's towards the back of the course catalog.
Good afternoon. Updates to the student progression plan section of the document. We have a few updates to share with you as a result of legislation that passed. Specific to House Bill 1147, this particular piece of legislation expanded the character education program to include additional topics for high school students. And that has been added in the first section of the student progression plan under the general information to define our K-12 program and also include the expansion of the high school topics for students. House Bill 7029 was really kind of a catch-all bill this year and parts of that did impact the student progression plan, specifically the credit acceleration program for high school students or the capping program, which previously was tied to only courses that had an end-of-course assessment, where students could take an end-of-course assessment without being enrolled in the course. And if they passed that assessment, they could cap the credit in that course, essentially earn their credit and bypass sitting for the annual course itself. This has expanded to other tests such as AP, CLEP, et cetera. It also expanded opportunities for students to satisfy their online course requirement for standard diploma using alternative mechanisms as defined in the verbiage updates. And then we added the seal of by-literacy also as one of our diploma designations available for high school students that become fluent in two languages in addition to the scholar and merit designation. We also cleaned up a bit of language by removing the post-secondary education readiness test or PERT language for mandatory testing of students for college readiness. And this language was removed from statute, therefore we removed it from the student progression plan. We will still use the PERT test, the mathematics portion of it, to provide students the opportunity to earn the comparative score for the Algebra I requirement for graduation for standard diploma. And that wraps up our changes. Do you have any questions?
Board members' questions? Mrs. Dozier.
Not really a question, but an observation and a comment. I know that every year we have to make a lot of changes due to some little tweaks that are done by, um, by the legislature. And I know that this is a lot of work and, and y'all put a lot of time and energy in this and I just want to thank you as one board members. I know everybody here probably appreciates all the work that y'all put into this. So thank you for this and it's a, it's a very good document that we can provide all of our families. So thank you.
Mrs. LaRiviere?
Well, and I, it was wonderful last year when I was going through the parent portal and I was able to show the parents the different programs for the high school. And I'm glad that you're doing that also for middle school because at middle school, we also offer some variance. And so it's wonderful for the parents to really be aware of that. And so I do appreciate that piece being in. And again, thank you to everyone beyond you, who I'm sure were involved in this process. And I let everyone know it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is what I've been waiting for, organizational charts and preliminary budget. Dr. Atkins and Dr. Desmore. Dr. Atkins?
Sure. As, as Dr. Desmore's makes her way to the dais, I just, just a little bit of a, an overview. First of all, I appreciate. First of all, I appreciate the board's patience. Typically, when I'm making decisions regarding key staffing positions, I try to do that very thoughtfully. It's the same with principal decisions. You know, I know that there are some angst out there as we wait, but these decisions tend to be folks that we put in place for a long period of time, and therefore, I think they have to, we have to take time in making quality decisions. Also, this budget represents a significant challenge. The dollars that were allocated to this district were less than what we would have desired with less than 1%, and, you know, we have the challenges of increasing growth, and we also are in a very competitive environment when it comes to, you know, recruiting and retaining staff. So, we had to make some significant reductions in some areas, including to the district office. We moved resources. You'll see a significant number of resources out to schools. That is reflected in this budget. But we also feel that we are poised in such a way that we can provide really superior support to what we've had in previous years. So, having said that, we'll start with Dr. Desmore's, but we also will have some of the division leaders come up and highlight some of the specific initiatives in their key areas. Dr. Desmore, thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, members of the board. We're here, as Dr. Atkins said, to go through the preliminary budget, and we believe that we have some really good information about what we've built in there this year, as well as some major initiatives that we have going for FY17. So, we're excited to share those with you. First of all, let us go through some of the budget assumptions that are in the budget. Many of these, we've talked about before, but just want to make sure that we're reiterating those again. And of course, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask as we go along. But within the budget this year, we are assuming a 7% increase in the tax roll. Now, this was a little bit different than we talked about when we had a briefing on the capital plan a couple of briefings ago, and talked about what we were expecting in terms of the tax roll. We were expecting about a 5% increase at that time. Well, we received a 7% from the preliminary, the preliminary tax roll number that we received from the property appraiser was a little bit more positive than what we had originally talked about in our capital plan. So, that is a very good thing. Now, the actual certified tax roll comes in on July 1, so we'll get that information from the property appraiser at that time. So, hopefully, that 7% figure holds up, but at this point, we have no reason to believe that it won't. So, looking at our current tax roll of about $69.1 billion, we're talking about going to a tax roll of $74.5 billion. So, we'll do, talk a little bit about that in a little bit, but remember, as far as increases in the tax roll, depending on what part of the budget that you're looking at, our benefit from that is, can be very restricted. In the capital funds, of course, all of our millage, the 1.5 that we're allowed to levy by the max, will be levied against that tax roll. But of course, in the general fund, what we're allowed to levy really is dictated by the state in terms of what they set as our required local effort. So, we don't really receive the benefit from that increased tax roll within the general fund. So, just a distinction and delineation and something that's a little bit different for us as a school district. So, as far as the rest of the years, when you look at that five-year capital plan that we talked about at a previous briefing, we do have a 3% to 4% increase in the tax roll built into that budget over the next four years. So, the current year would be, or FY17 would be that 7% increase that we just talked about, and then the next four years would encompass 3% to 4% increases across the rest of those years. So, we believe kind of, you know, a conservative look at that over the next five years in terms of what our tax roll will do. We assume in the budget right now that the same nine schools will have extended time. If you recall, the DOE determines who has that extended time in the day, an additional half an hour, based on the reading scores of all schools across the state, and those with the 300 schools with the lowest reading scores have to have the extended time. We have nine of those this year, so we're assuming the same number next year. However, we really won't know the actual schools that will have that extended time until probably sometime in July. So, that could have a little impact on the budget, which we'll talk about in just a little bit. Looking at other assumptions, we assumed that in every school, every teacher will have daily planning, and that is a different approach than what had been taken in previous years. That was a big discussion that the superintendent had with the board, and that was the direction that we were given and what was communicated to teachers, and so that's what we have built into the budget. So, that was an impact on the budget. And then, when you look at the 2% student growth over the current year, which is also what we're assuming, those two things in conjunction could, of course, have some impact on class size. We structured the budget for middle schools and elementaries that they will be able to accomplish their daily planning within the allocation that we gave them. We increased high school allocations by about one and a half million in order to accomplish that daily planning. However, we did increase class size. And then, as far as growth is concerned, we are looking at the number of teachers that we have out in the buildings right now, and how we're able to handle that growth with the number of teachers before we are deciding on adding any more. So, we might have some class size challenges as we enter into the FY17 year, depending on where the, how many students come in, where they show up, but we will be keeping you apprised on that. As Dr. Atkins mentioned, there are additional resources in the FY17 budget that are allocated to our DA schools. One of the advisory committees talked about the presentation that was given to advisory schools and talked about the fact that there's, they thought there should be some differentiation in salary for people that work at those schools. And so, both of those things really are built into the FY17 budget. We've got the retention and recruitment bonuses that are built in for the 16 hard-to-staff schools, and that goes back to one of the briefings that we had with you recently on the DA schools, building in that bonus at the end of the FY16 year for those teachers that decided to stay or committed to stay for the next three years, and then bonuses of at least $2,100 for those teachers who stay in those schools for that period of time, and that are effective, are highly effective in each year. And that's the $2,100 at a minimum. Remember, there were several different components to that. So, that is built into the FY17 budget. As well, when we talk about additional resources to the DA schools, we're talking in terms of personnel, and also in terms of the building or infrastructure. We had meetings with, special meetings with the superintendent, several members of his cabinet, and principals or administration from eight of our schools, of our DA schools, so that they could really sit down and talk with us about all their funding sources, what they had, how they were using those funding sources, and what else they felt that they were in need of, if anything. So, we had those meetings, and after those meetings came to conclusion on some additional resources that we were going to allocate those schools in order to make sure that we had our resources in our highest needs schools, and that's part of what you have built into the FY17 budget. And then recruitment incentives is another new initiative that we have built into the FY17 budget, relocation and referral incentives. And so, of course, focus area four, recruitment and retention of high-quality staff is of major concern, a major focus in the budget. And so, that is a new thing, and I'll leave the details of that for a little later when we get into our initiatives in each of our divisions. But just wanted to give an overview of some of the major things that you'll find in the budget for this year. So, when you look at our preliminary budget by the numbers, and again, this is preliminary, when you, when we get to the tentative budget at the end of July, these numbers will look a little bit different as we get into the process of finalizing the budget with our fund balances and different numbers that might come in. However, this is a good look at what we have built in right now. You'll see that the general fund increased about $17 million, and again, that's totally due to the FEFP increase that we talked about. We'll get into the details of that FEFP increase, but as Dr. Atkins mentioned earlier, it was an extremely small increase, less than 1% when you look at the per FTE number that we're receiving. The debt service numbers, as we discussed in our capital briefing, we do have numbers for debt service built in for a new high school coming on in the South Zone, which we'll talk about momentarily. And then, that total budget right now at the preliminary time is increased or up about $22.5 million when you look at all funds. We expect that number to increase significantly. You'll see that, that pretty significant decrease in federal funds right now, and that is because we're still gathering information about the federal funds that we're going, you know, that we expect to receive, and we'll budget them as we receive them. So, as we get to the final budget, you'll see that number rise between now and the final budget.
Bless you.
Thank you.
So, just to talk a little bit about what we don't know or what's still in the air right now. So, we still don't know those schools that will fall within the lowest 300 that we talked about earlier that might have to have some extended time. Now, that might have an impact on the funding that we received, because within that FEFP increase of the $18.8 million, we did receive about $2.7 million of that in order to fund additional time at those schools. So, if we do not have the number of schools that they anticipated us to have in that group, they will come back for that money. So, right now, we have to plan for that, depending on how many we get. There are still some decisions to be made on our high school LLL, and so, those conversations are ongoing, and as soon as those decisions are made, then of course, it will finalize what we have inside of debt service in our capital plan and in our debt service funds. And then, the second calculation of the Florida Education Finance Program is still yet to be received. As I mentioned earlier, the tax roll is certified by the property appraiser on July 1. When the property appraiser does that, they send that information up to the DOE, and then the DOE will use that final tax roll in order to recalculate our Florida Education Finance Program dollars. So, we could gain or we could lose in that calculation, depending on what that second, what that final tax roll comes in as. And so, you'll see those adjustments being made in the tentative budget that comes before you on July 26. So, some things that could kind of impact the numbers that we have. The first calculation of the FEFP, we received $676.1 million. Again, that incorporates the 7% increase in the tax roll. It also, we also had to incorporate within the budget a new retirement rate, 7.5%. And so, that's about a 3% increase over what we had in FY16. So, that equated to, for us, a little bit over $1 million that we built into the budget for that. There was also changes in legislation about the reading allocation. In the past, part of our reading allocation, or that reading categorical, we did not have to specifically give to charters. This coming up year, we do. So, that was part of legislation that was there that impacted us financially. For us this year, we'll be distributing to our charter schools a little over half a million dollars. So, that was that impact to us this I talked about that increase in the FEFP. Again, a little less than 1% increase when you're looking at that per-student basis funding that we're receiving. The cost for growth in our students was about $13.8 million when you're just looking at year-over-year in that per-student funding that we received from FY16. That FRS rate increase, again, about $1.1 million, and then potentially at risk because of the lowest 300, about $2.7 million. So, just wanting to make sure we really went over those budget realities, what we're looking at, what we built in as far as increases to the budget, and what we still have to look forward to in terms of information that we need to gather and finalize in order to present to you a tentative budget in July. So, what we still have left to do, bargaining needs to be completed, and that includes any compensation indication, implications, and again, which will have effect on the budget, and then any monetary effects of new legislation will need to be reviewed. So, we're still working on, and one of the big ones from this year was the House Bill 7026, how that really impacts the district, depending on how we carry those things out. So, we're still in a lot of discussion related to those. So, when we look at the budget details that you have, and I want to point you to the budget backup that you have as part of the PDF document, I just want to go through each of those so that you, so that I can point out what is in there, and then if you have any questions related to it, you know, just let me know. But the first thing you have in your packet is, of course, the org chart. And after I go through each of the documents in here, of course, I'll get, if the superintendent would like to speak to the org chart, that would be wonderful. So, we have the org chart here that presents for FY17, all of the district administration, what that org chart looks like for FY17, how the divisions are structured, and what responsibilities are under each division. As you go through the next page, you'll see the requested position changes for FY17. These requested position changes are all of the position changes that, at this point, have been requested and that we're presenting for approval for the FY17 budget. And you'll see that there are several effective dates within those. For many of our positions, we like to start them after the approval of the final budget in September. However, for some positions, depending on what the nature of the position is, it is necessary to try to start that earlier in order to have it for the summertime to ramp up for the school year. So, you'll see the positions listed there that we're requesting a July 1 start date for. One thing I would like to point out is if you come to the bottom of that sheet and you see the, the total cost of the positions, the total cost of the position changes that we're looking at, and this is for all funds, you'll see the positions listed, and we have them broken out into the different funds. The total cost of those in all is a little over $3 million, and then you see that we've eliminated positions for a little over $3 million as well. And then, the positions that you see with a star or the asterisk next to them are school-based positions. They're not necessarily department-based or this-building-based positions. So, when we talk about school-based positions, we're talking about things like social workers, the people that go out and will be at schools each day, doing work there, nurses, positions to that effect. So, when you look at the total changes for things that have happened or the cost of the changes that are really dealing with things at the department level or at this building level, we're looking at a decrease in the amount that the positions cost of almost $600,000.
Okay.
When you go to the next page, and I talked about the positions that were eliminated, you'll see the specific list of those positions that we're suggesting to eliminate for the FY17 year. So, I appreciate the discussion that you all had earlier, and Mr. Toyber, I think it was, that talked about, you know, what efficiencies we're trying to find at, you know, throughout our budget. What are we doing to try to get a little bit more efficient? And this was our attempt together as a team and as a cabinet to really look at how things are working within our divisions right now, how we can produce greater results than what we've had, and maybe look at the resources and figure out how to retool them in order to get a little bit more out of the funding that we had. And this is the result of that. When you look at the next page, and this, the district office administration, you will see the numbers listed here, and just an account of the administrative positions from 2012 through the proposed budget of 2017, and what that count of administrative positions are. You see the type of administrative positions that are here. So, these are at this building level. It does not include our principals or assistant principals, but kind of at this building level. And when you look at the difference between FY16, our current year, and next year, FY17, we're looking at a reduction of six administrative positions. And then, the next pages that you have after that is we wanted to give you some detail of the projects that were built into the budget, so special projects that have line items in the budget, a description of what those projects were, and the amounts associated with those projects. So, all of that is in the packet, in the ensuing pages. And then, also, job descriptions. If any of the position changes that we're requesting for FY17, if they come with new job descriptions, changes to job descriptions, or updates to job descriptions, all of those job descriptions are also attached for you here in the packet. And so, these job descriptions would be coming forward to you at the action meeting on the 28th, given that we have approval for them to move forward. So, just wanted to give an update on what that was, or just kind of break down, you know, the information that you had in your packets.
And with that same action, we would also be bringing forward job descriptions that we would be deleting. So.
Okay.
It has the whole picture.
Sure. Okay. So, Dr. Atkins, did you want to speak to the organizational chart, or am I ready to move on to our district initiatives?
I can speak briefly to the organizational chart. The first thing I do want to draw your attention to is that you see that- The first thing I do want to draw your attention to is that you see that, let me get to it real quick, I apologize. You see that, you know, across the, across the level, you have chief positions as opposed to assistant superintendent, executive director, and also a chief. So right now, there's like a hierarchy of three. The intent, Dr. Pruitt has worked out a matrix that would allow the chief position to have a wider range of compensation so that we have greater flexibility to bring in a person with a salary that's commensurate with their level of experience and, and expertise, so somebody who may have district-level experience at a large districts, another school district over a number of years could be brought in at a higher level, but somebody that's more of an entry level could be brought in at a lower pay scale. So, and it also helps us to flatten the organizational structure somewhat. The other thing that you'll see reflected in this, this chart is you'll see a chief technology officer. You know, we are ninth-largest school district in the state of Florida, 33rd largest in the United States, and we really need to have somebody that has a vision and an expertise in the area of technology. We don't have that right now. We have some really smart people within our organization, but we need a unification of the division, of that vision, and so we're recommending a chief technology officer. Something just to bring to your attention, we were looking for a while for an executive director of transportation services, and we have not found a person that, that meets what our desire is at this point. Mr. Law has considerable expertise in this area, so I've asked him to really take a hands-on approach for the time being. He's agreed to do that and has some really great ideas, and as he learns more about our organization, I think he's going to be in a really good position to make some good recommendations of what we look like moving forward. But in the time being, we're recommending a director position, somebody within our organization to step up and fill that role, and then also develop a succession plan for the executive director when we bring that position on board probably later in the year. But that's open right now, and will be open into the foreseeable future, and I will talk to you before I fill that position. But that also gives us really at least one more set of hands for Mr. Law, he asked for more, but, but it gives him at least one more set of hands that will help him with one of the largest transportation organizations in the state. So, that's another piece. And I think the rest of it is fairly self-explanatory, except that we did move from three executive directors and a director for turnaround down to two executive directors for school development, and then they will be also, not only with overseeing the school principals, but they'll work very carefully with the, with the 15 principal leads that we are also proposing with this particular budget, which I think will give us a better handle on making sure that process, procedures, protocols, practices are driven down throughout the organization with fidelity. I will tell you one change, and before we come to the final final, I may come to you and talk to you about a little bit more of a focus on DA schools, and I may have a need to, to add a position specific to that. I'm meeting with the chancellor from the Department of Education in two days to talk about our DA plan, and then I, you may or may not know that I also am charged with presenting to the state board coming up in July, our, our plan, specific to not only just all of our DA schools, but specific to James Stephens and also Franklin Park, because those, those are our schools of highest need. So, working with our regional executive director today, and then also the chancellor in the upcoming day, and I'll, I'll have a little bit more firm recommendation as to whether I need to bring that position on board. But that would be in addition to what you see right here. And again, because we got our, we just got our test scores in, as you know, we have analyzed our test scores, and, you know, I, there's some changes that I'm going to be recommending as a result. The good news is, is that a lot of the things that we had, we, we already, we already have in the pipeline, we've already been working on that, that, so we anticipated the work, this work, but also after seeing it, we, we do feel we need to tweak our overall plan. Any questions on the org chart before I turn it back over to Dr. Desmore?
Mrs. Dozier.
Not really a question, because you and I have discussed this at length. And first of all, I want to express my appreciation for you being very thoughtful and very mindful as you move forward with your organization, our reorganization structure. I know that you could have done one immediately, but you didn't. Instead, you kind of sat back and you listened, you watched as to what was going on, and you kind of had several different thoughts, and then you've come up with this final product, which, as you said, it may even change a little bit more before it comes before us on the 28th.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
But I want to thank you for being very mindful, and I'm going to ask you a question that I ask, and I will ask it then. Is this going to be everything that you need to bring us back to a high-performing school district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Since you are confident that this is something that will work for you, and it will work for our district, then I'm certainly going to be right behind you, pushing you all the way, and, and supporting this wholeheartedly. So thank you for all the work that you've put into this.
Thank you.
Mrs. LaRiviere.
And I go, I kind of am thinking the same way that Ms. Dozier is. I just want to make sure that you have all the pieces in place so you can get the job done that you want to do. And I, for one, understand that as you're working along, you may find I need to tweak this, and so I am, I will be more than open and ready to hear those tweaks as long as they don't cost a whole lot.
Board members, for the 28th.
Yeah, just, just to, to expand on that, yes, we did take a lot of time to go over this particular budget. I think that, you know, I, this is the, what we feel is the, the best based on the, the dollars that are available. You know, obviously, we would have loved to have had more resources that would come to us, but with less than 1%, you know, we had to really roll up our sleeves, and I do appreciate the work of staff. We had some very, very difficult decisions. They, they did not get everything that they wanted by a long shot in some cases, but committed to go back to the drawing board and roll up their sleeves and, and, and work harder and come back with this product. So, a lot of work has gone into that, and I appreciate you mentioning that. They've done a good job with it.
Okay. So that being said, then, I'd like to turn the presentation over to our, our leadership, who will then kind of talk about some of the initiatives that they have in each of their divisions. So, Saretta, if, with Teaching and Learning, if you'd come up first and talk about some of the, the initiatives that you have in your division this year, and then I would be followed by Mr. Law.
Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm. I don't think I've ever spoken from this spot before. Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins. We, we heard your concerns about changes that needed to be made in the departments and how we could support schools. And in Teaching and Learning, we, we made some changes this year to support schools for this upcoming school year. We did some major reorganization. We, we have put our staff out in those schools. We have made a slight reduction in our staff. You heard Dr. Desmore talk about reduction in administrators. We've gone from 12 coordinators down to six coordinators for this upcoming school year. We're going to have our professional development leaders out in the schools. We'll have 20 of those people assigned to our schools. They'll each have five to six schools that they will be assigned to, and they'll be providing that support to those schools every week. They'll be teaching 20% of the time to, at those hard-to-staff and DA schools. They will be working with our children. They'll be mentoring teachers to help with that teacher retention. So we want to ensure that we are keeping those teachers in those schools, we're helping with the student achievement, and we're providing that professional development at the school site so that it's job embedded, and they're not having to leave the school, getting substitutes in the classroom. We can meet those needs during the school day when they have those breaks, and we can model classrooms for them. We also want to let you know that we're providing some savings to the district, and that money will then be used at those hard-to-serve schools to provide resources that are needed. While we always are working on how we can help support those schools, we did meet today with our regional executive director, and we're going to have to make some changes to support schools, but, but we're going to roll up our sleeves and we're going to ensure that we're meeting the needs of those schools. We're also looking at some changes that we can make in our ESE department, our Exceptional Student Education Department. We have, in the past, we've assigned our coordinators by zones, but we know their expertise might be better served at different levels, so we have redesigned that to be at possibly early childhood and elementary, and then our middle school and high schools, so that we can spread them out so that they're more focused on what their expertise is. We've also made a change, Dr. Atkins, we went to him with a plan with LAMP. We have Success Academy starting up. Our LAMP women are in those schools. We wanted to separate them from Success Academy so that we can put them with early childhood, because that's where they need to be learning those skills that are going to help them be successful. He said, "Well, give me a plan." We went back a week later with a plan, he said, "Let's make it happen." We went to the staff on Friday, shared the plan with them, the staff related. They, they had tears in their eyes. One of the staff members was actually her last year, she's retiring, actually yesterday was her last day. She said, "I have worked this long, I'd almost like to stay one more year because I'm so excited about this change." So we're making some changes that we're very excited about to meet the needs of students and our staff. Thank you.
One of the things I do, I do want to mention is, is the PDNL specialist that Saretta mentioned in her presentation, that will be working with those schools and providing embedded professional development, working with teachers and working with kids, will also be working with our principal leaders. So, we'll be able to provide a coordinated effort throughout our district in a way that, in a way that's never been done before. So, I just, I'm really looking forward to how that's, how that is going to allow us to spread best practices across our school district like we've never been able to do in the past.
We need to get all of our arrows aligned.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Toyber, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fisher. I, I just want to thank Ms. Ralph, you know, for, for looking at LAMP and saying it doesn't work and we're going to fix it. It's been this way for so long that I think people forgot, and the Success Academy is another example of, it just wasn't working, and everybody, you kind of knew it could be better. I mean, it worked to, to an extent, but it really didn't get us where, where our kids needed to be, and really didn't get them prepared. And to take these challenging moves, to take something and say, you know, "We're going to start all over," and really look at doing it right. I have to commend Ms. Ralph and her team for doing that, and I really have to commend for putting the people out into the schools. That's a bold move. You know, I said long ago, with any organization, the propensity of the leader to take all the resources and put it to the center, it's the way to do that, because the hub is where, where the superintendent is or a CEO is, and to have the power around them is a really comforting feeling to have that warm and fuzzy, to have all your resources at your disposal. To push them out into the, into the spokes is how you get the momentum of a circle, you know, of a wheel spinning when all the, the weight's out in the spokes. And it's, and it's, as a leader, it's a, it's a frightening thing because you really have to put your faith into your people. You really have to trust that when you push the power out there and you give the power to the people in, in the, in the facilities, that they are, they can do their jobs, because they've got, it's going to, you know, it's going to really pick up a lot of momentum or it's, or you're really going to be in trouble. And this is the first time in 16 years, this district, and I, and I haven't seen it across anywhere else in the state, that a superintendent's willing to put his faith in his staff, his people, and push the power away from him, saying, "I trust you guys, this is what we need to do, and this is where we're going to go." And we're going to see that in our schools, the, the effect is going to be outstanding. I'm really excited about where we're going. And the last thing, and I don't want to keep on talking, but, but the Dr. Desmore, that to be able to do what she's doing with our budget with all these challenges of where we want it to do, all, if you looked at all the things that are different, because we need to do that, we need to have teachers paid better for, for going into areas that are tougher, we need to have retention, all these things we've needed for, I mean, this isn't new. This has been needed for such a long time, and for finally her to say, "We're going to make it happen," and to figure out ways to make the budget work, it's just, it's an amazing team, so I'm just excited.
Right.
Board members.
Mr. Law, and then followed by Dr. Pruitt.
Good afternoon, board, and Dr. Atkins, and Mr. Martin. I'm really excited to be here today. I've been in the district coming up on three months, and I tell you, it has been a challenge. Dr. Atkins was talking about resources and stuff, and he kind of reminded me of when I was working with General Charlie Casavili, and we was doing a movement to contact, and he told me, he says, he says, "Captain," he says, "I want you to go up and, and take this hill and do all these things here." And I turned to him, I said, "Well, sir," I says, "I don't have enough resources to do that." And he looked at me with death in his eyes, and he says, "You know what, young man?" He says, "I got courage that you can get this done. Take care of your soldiers and move out." So, with that, this is what I've done with what Dr. Atkins has asked me to do. Based on the reorganization of the operation division, I kind of redesigned the vision in a way where I'm trying to push top-down so that we can give it a better support for the resources on the ground when they're on the streets with the drivers, as well as giving the principals support when they are on the platforms with the ramps, as well as looking at what cost-saving measures I can look at in terms of energy, energy proficient during the daytime. So I have a whole bunch of initiatives that I want to talk about, but I just want to talk about two that I think that has the greatest impact. So the first I want to talk about is my five-year bus replacement program. And I know that many of you have been concerned about the, the buses in terms of the wear and tear on the street. Well, I think that we have a plan very aggressively in how we're going to attack that. Currently, we have 877 buses in the fleet with a high replacement within a 12-year cycle. I guess you say, "Well, that's not so bad." But the back part on this is that of the 187, 187 buses, we have about 775 buses that is out of warranty. So what that does for us is that it increases our maintenance costs, which makes our budget, our budget looks a little bit out of place. So, what are we doing to remedy that? Couple of things that I'm taking a look at is already we have purchased 37 buses, and in those buses, they are planned to be here between September and October of this year. Now, the other thing that we've done very aggressively is, this is something that we've never done here in the district, we went out and what we did, what we call a lease-to-own purchase of 180, 180 buses that we're hoping to be here by the end of the year. I'm pretty sure it will be. Also in that is that we are going to continue to purchase 80, correction, 57 additional buses over the next five years, what will put us back and rim where we need to be in terms of replacement.
57 a year or 57 total over five years?
Uh, we, we actually is, we have 57 buses we're going to purchase each year for the next five years. Now, I guess you said, "Well, this is going to cost us a lot of money." Yes, and no. So what we plan to do with this is that we're going to take $4 million, and we're going to lease those 180 buses. Now, the back end on that is over a five-year, a five-year period, we have cost savings. For every year because of the lease, we save about $1 million, and over five years, we have $5 million. And now you say, "Well, that come from?" That comes from all the repairs that we do on the old buses that we're going to take off the street, mechanics' costs in terms of parts, overtime that we have the mechanics to actually do the work on the vehicles. And so we have that $5 million that we can reinvest and put it somewhere else. So I think that's going to be a great thing for us as we're moving forward. Now, the second initiative that I think is very important that we have is what we call the that we have is what we call the Energy Initiative Program. And I know that this has been on the table for some time that everybody's concerned about. What we have done with the team is that we've taken this particular process and broken it in three phases. Phase one is basically is the implementation where we at right now. We are already doing what we need to do. What we're looking at is the low-hanging fruit in terms of looking at the cooler water pumps and we're replacing a lot of those. And we're doing something that we've never done before. And that is, is that what we're doing is we are merging a, what we call a cooler-type plant where that, all of them are coming together versus using one. And then we're using those standard things throughout the day, like watching our lights and how we use those particular things. Also is that the second phase that we're looking at is now is looking at the human behavior and also looking at the equipment that we have in our offices, our equipment that we use around the district. Phase two is that we're looking at some consultants to come in and help us better look in depth in terms of what are those things that we can do for cost savings to help us out. Right now, we have interviewed three companies. Also, we got three that I think next week that we'll be looking at. And matter of fact, today I had one more call from another company wanting to come and give us some quotes in terms of what they can do. So, which is that's going to really help us a lot. And then phase three that we'll be looking at is then looking at what they have given to us and looking at what are the, what we call the factors in terms of the risk factors. And from those, then we'll go and go into our implementation phase. One of the things that I want to share with you with our energy cost initiative, up to date, we probably have saved probably about $1.1 million based on changing those chilos and integrating our chilos and other little things that we have done to take care of low-hanging fruit. So, those are two initiatives that I'm focused on right now, but we do have a couple others that I think that as we progress through the year, that would give us a great return. Any questions at this time?
Yes, Mrs. Dozier.
I heard you say that you were interviewing companies now for an energy plan. I know that we were working with Florida Power and Light and we had a plan, one, two, and three in place. And where are we with Florida Power and Light?
There, we haven't put them on the schedule, but they're, from my understanding, is that we will be scheduling them probably in the next two weeks to come down and we look at their plan, what they have.
Mr. Toyber.
I just want to add with the buses, the cost savings is definitely remarkable and worth noting, but it also prevents the breakdowns during the school day and the delivery at the schools. And that's where, that will increase our academic performance and our achievement. When our schools, you know, when the kids don't get there, we can't teach them. And I can tell you, that is the behest of every principal in our district because of our deplorable, you know, on-time delivery with breakdowns. And you can't help it. I mean, if they break down, you got to go fix them. And it's not easy to fix a bus as it is to change a tire on a car. So, I mean, it's a problem. We have to bring in a replacement bus, do this, you know, unload the kids. People don't realize the activity, what it requires when we have our buses breaking down. So, I think that that also, you know, dovetails into our academic performance as well. So, I commend you on that. It's a good choice.
Thank you.
Board members?
And then I have a question. Back to the buses. On the lease to own, that's a five-year lease?
Yes, ma'am.
And then what happens at the end of the lease?
Oh, we own the buses.
You own the buses. We don't have to pay more?
Not a dime.
Not a dime. Okay. That sounds like a good deal. Now, with the energy phase one, two, and three, what might those risk factors that you mentioned be?
Those risk factors we're looking at is things in terms of the office, like consolidating copy machines, looking at refrigerators in terms of just having those in one concentrated area, maybe in a break room, and those particular things.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Board members, any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Dr. Pruitt.
Hello, everyone, again. So, you've heard a lot about human resources and the things that we've been doing this year, but I'm just going to review some of the highlights with you. A lot of the initiatives and the work we're doing have done and will continue to do really sort of stem from everyone in human resources getting yellow belt trained and then the leadership and others being green belt trained, which really sort of set the framework for us to become more efficient and to really look at our processes and how we can improve and kind of just continue to move things forward. So, with that in mind, recruitment, one of the big areas, really looking at how we're going to make sure we're getting the best return on our investment with the money that we're spending on recruitment. Are we getting a return for that? Rather than, "Oh, well, let's do this trip." And yeah, that trip seemed like a good idea, when we really had no data to look at that. And then further from that, look at what are we converting? When the contacts that we make, what is causing those to turn into employees that actually come and are successful in our district? So, again, all stemming from those improvements in our processes. And then doing some innovative things like we sort of talked about earlier with reinitiating the minority recruitment committee, with looking at a homegrown, initiating the, in the high schools and, you know, those academies there and with the Teach Summit that we did and the information sessions that you've seen and really our targeted marketing, virtual recruitment fairs. I could go on for 30 minutes about, you know, the improvements and changes we've made in recruitment. In terms of compensation, really moving towards making that career ladder work and making it mean something and really moving in the direction that I know this board has talked a lot about, and that is making it a real career ladder and not just a, you know, across the board, we're going to, you know, do this increase when it's not really tied to anything other than, you know, time in the seat. While that's important and a piece of it, it just isn't the whole picture. And also with that, looking, when we look at our other employee units, looking at market analysis and are we paying what we need to be paying? So, that we know if we're going to struggle to get people in IS, then what do we need to be paying in those positions? And as we do increases and put money towards our salary schedules to make sure it's based on something and based on, you know, market data and the experience of the employees and what our actual needs are. And again, which stems from the improvement in our processes and looking at what we need to do to get better. Improving the hiring in Lee County Way and our onboarding process, we're really, we're just right on the cusp of you no longer will have to show up here and sit in a meeting before you have to start your job. We're going to transition to an electronic onboarding so that when we do, we are going to still require employees to come down here for a face-to-face, but that can be more culture-oriented. This is what we're about in Lee County Schools and this is what matters to us. Rather than spending your time looking at, "Okay, this is your insurance form. Now, let's flip to the next page." We'll be able to do that setup upfront. So, what people have to do to start their job, we can do at their own pace rather than waiting till we have a meeting scheduled, but then we can do real onboarding, you know, sometime within the first 30 days of their employment. So, that's, you know, another thing I'm really excited about. And then again, just additional Six Sigma projects that we're looking at with everything that we're doing. I'm excited that there's conversations with other teams like the Innovation Group that's going to use the Demeic method to look at teacher retention and see how we can go about fixing that. So, just very, very excited about working more efficiently and improving the processes and, you know, just making some really good improvements as we move forward. Questions?
Questions? Board members?
Just really appreciate the things that you've done, your leadership within human resources and some of the changes. And I know it's been collaborative with many people.
Yes.
But thank you for spearheading that and working with others to move forward.
Thank you.
One of the things with the org chart that she has, she has changed, I think has made a significant difference, at least what I've seen in the short term, is she's broken the compensation piece off and is putting it under the labor piece. So, you're combining the compensation and the labor. And the thinking that comes out of there is, I think, very, very innovative and forward, very forward thinkers, the gentlemen down there that are involved in that. And you'll see that moving forward when we get into bargaining, but also it's, you've already seen it with the administrative salary schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then as far as the Business Services Division is concerned, we really want to be able to put the emphasis on education this year as far as our revenue efficiency. We really want to work on educating the public as to how we currently utilize our funding and how we might do things differently or better in the future, really getting some input from our, from our public and making a real concerted effort as far as a communication campaign, which was one of the things that we discussed at our, one of our, the previous capital briefing about how we would do that to really start building some understanding as far as how our budget works and how things might be different. There was reference made earlier in the meeting today to the revenue initiative that the county was doing in terms of how they were breaking off their funding and trying to designate some of that to capital. And I know that there was conversation that the county had as to how we could potentially do something like that here. There are fundamental differences between how we and the county are funded. However, we are wanting to, you know, continue that conversation with them as well as the rest of the public this year to really get feedback and to try to show, to the extent that we can, the efficiencies that we have in our budget, what we've currently done to try to make sure that we're utilizing our resources as best as we possibly can and then try to take their suggestions and incorporate them where we can. Because I'm sure there are good suggestions out there that we definitely can take advantage of. We also want to concentrate on process improvement. There are several things that we have on the deck for next year. We started a Laserfish implementation in this year in terms of creating more document imaging and electronic document flow for our purchasing and invoicing functions. We want to continue to incorporate that into payroll, into HR next year. And we're also working on and should be implementing very early in this fiscal year, a new transportation payroll process, which will entail the elimination of Kronos, which is a whole nother system that we use to help facilitate our transportation payroll. We'll be eliminating that, which will be eliminating some costs in terms of having to pay for that system. But in addition, what we hope it will do is also eliminate a lot of time and redundancies in process that people are using now. So, we're a small but a mighty division and we're hoping that the more that we can improve our process, we can be able to absorb new functions and do things more efficiently without, and handle the growth without adding, having to add additional personnel. And that is what our focus is. As far as food services is concerned, we're looking at menu improvements. We've been, over the past year, really surveying our students. We want to know of the, our students and teachers, the people that are eating our food, what is your feedback on that? What is it that you like? What is it that you don't like? And so, there are changes that we'll be making to the menu next year to take out the things that people don't like, to incorporate more of the things that people do like, and to try to incorporate increased variety of option and healthy option and so that we're, so that kids are excited about coming in and eating lunch. It's important that we feed them. And of course, we have the CEP program that we started this year where many of our students come to school and don't have to pay additional dollars for lunch because it's part of that federal reimbursement program. We'll be adding one school to that mix for next year, Ida Baker. So, we'll continue that, but not only is it important that we are providing meals to our students every day, but it is important that they like and enjoy the meals that we're providing. So, we're working hard to make that happen. And then as far as student-centered technology, we know that technology is a focus. It's one of the tools that our schools use. And we want to make sure that we are providing that technology that schools need in order to make sure that they're performing the education function or that we're providing that tool to best meet the needs of all of our schools that are out there. So, the high schools will be moving to our Chromebook initiative next year. And of course, our elementaries as well will be in need of some new technologies and basically just the training associated with the use of those tools and also making sure that all of our schools are up to date as far as having the technology that the district can support and some that is of an appropriate age and appropriate type that we can maintain it at the district level with the resources that we have here. So, those are some of the major initiatives that we have within business services and technology. So, I thank my colleagues for coming up and really briefing you all in terms of the initiatives that are going on. We felt that that was important to do because there are a lot of numbers behind the budget and that's very important, but also it's important about what the numbers are driving and what we're doing with those numbers. And we wanted to make sure to present that to you today. So, as far as the next steps, what will happen within this budget process, the superintendent will present his proposed tentative budget to you by July 22. And I just wanted to remind that this is a little bit different than the regular schedule. Typically, our tentative budget briefing is on the 26th of July. It's marked on my calendar. It's been for a long time and I know you all are looking forward to it as much as I am. It's a big day. But typically, we would give you information for a briefing a week ahead of time. In this particular case, according to the TRIM rules, we do not get a revised calculation of the FEFP from the DOE until July 19, according to legislation. And so, because we're not getting that information till the 19th, we'll compile that new information and then, according to TRIM rules, must present that tentative, proposed tentative budget to you all by July 22. So, that is when it will be coming to you. You will see the advertisement of the budget in the news press, according to TRIM rules. And we are set to have that advertisement in the paper on July 22 as well. We'll have the tentative budget hearing on the 26th. We probably will have another budget briefing on the 23rd of August to update you on any changes that we are proposing to happen between the tentative and the final, with the final budget hearing set to be, to take place on September 13. So, that's kind of the overview of our preliminary budget at this time and next steps. Is there something we haven't covered or do you have any questions?
Board members?
I do have one question. On, with the requested position changes and the fiscal year '17 eliminations, on page 293 and 294, there are far more positions eliminated than reclassified or changed or new. Is that partly attrition that, or is it change in position name? Or, I mean, how do you, what about those people, I guess, is what I'm asking bottom line?
It is, it is partly attrition. Some of the, some people have moved on from the district or retired from positions. And so, it is partly attrition. Some of them are, like as Saretta was speaking to, her re-division, her, you know, reorganization of her division, then yes, there were people in those positions that were encouraged and could apply for other positions that were coming forward in that department or could receive other positions within the district.
Okay. So, that might be some of the people who are deployed to the schools.
Yeah, it could be, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, anything else? Okay. Dr. Atkins, any more comments?
Okay, then next, on the agenda, we have teaching and learning with Mrs. Ralph, school improvement plans for the Fort Myers Prep and Fitness Academy and the Pivot Charter School.
Good afternoon.
It's our pleasure to be here today. My name is Stefan Terabenech. I am currently serving as the principal of the Fort Myers Prep and Fitness Academy.
And my name is Craig Knotts. I'm with the educational service provider, Slarity Florida Group, that manages the Fort Myers Prep and Fitness Academy.
Tell you a little bit about the Fort Myers Prep and Fitness Academy. We're located at 4740 South Cleveland Avenue, right here in Fort Myers. We are currently serving 267 students in the kindergarten through eighth grade. Our students do qualify for 100% free and reduced lunch. We are participating in the CEP program currently. We are also proud to serve a diverse population of students. Currently, our student population is 26% African-American, 57% Latino, 2% American Indian, 3% multiracial, and 12% Caucasian. We provide one hour of physical activity or physical fitness per day to our students. We are also a Title I school and we are dedicated and honored to be able to serve the families of our community. And we are committed to seeing our students the families of our community, and we are committed to seeing our students succeed.
So I think the, the goal here today is to kind of go over and present to you our school improvement plan, which in conjunction with our Title I plan. It's kind of a recipe, um, that we think with the most recent test scores too, uh, is, is, is a recipe for success. Uh, Mr. Terabenech will speak a little bit more, uh, but what we've seen so far is very promising, what's coming out over the next few days, to where hopefully this will be the last time we will be ever needing to present a plan to you, uh, by any means, um, based on these scores and, and moving forward. So Mr. Terabenech is going to talk a little bit about some of the components of that, um, of what we're gonna, what we found in our plan and what we're going to continue to do, uh, to make sure we, uh, keep moving towards that A letter grade.
Great, thank you.
Uh, so number one, we're going to continue to have a supportive educational environment. So to continue to go forward with our, with our mission to prepare students for high school, college, and beyond. Uh, we're going to continue to foster a, a school environment of positive relationships and mutual respect. We, uh, are going to continue to have early warning signs, uh, in place as well, early warning systems. We're going to continue to encourage family involvement and, and community involvement by, uh, building relationships with families and, uh, community resources. Uh, we're also going to continue to have ambitious instruction, uh, with multiple assessments that help to inform instruction. A couple of our, uh, highlights, uh, from this year, our, our third graders, uh, had the sixth highest gains in Lee County on the most recent, uh, FSA testing, and our sister school, uh, Cape Coral Prep and Fitness Academy, uh, they showed, uh, the number one gains in Lee County in third grade test scores. Uh, this year, in the recent test results, as Mr. Knotts had alluded to, our school has seen significant gains in the recently released FSA test scores. Uh, our middle school's math students have showed some really amazing gains. Uh, some keys, just a few keys for our continued growth and success of our students. We plan to continue to, uh, retain and hire great teachers, and even more importantly, great people, just great staff members. I, I truly believe that, uh, the key to success, uh, of our schools is to, to continue and maintain and have great people in our organizations. We're going to continue to always put students first, and we're going to continue to use data to drive instruction, and...
Yeah, so, uh, and a couple of the goals that we'd identified in our plan were, um, making sure we're, we're figuring out those, those, uh, that, the professional development for teachers, specifically around differentiated, differentiated instruction that's going to best meet each individual student's need. Uh, that's something that we're fine tuning and giving, um, making sure that we're going to continue forward with. Um, in addition, just that intensity of professional development, both on a daily basis via grade level, um, weekly basis, site-based, and then, um, opportunities, um, for our schools to collaborate with each other, uh, as well. Um, and, and what we love is, again, just really making sure that the school improvement plan is in conjunction with our Title I plan, so that everything and all those goals and everything we're doing is moving forward, uh, in a, in a, um, solid cohesive way to increase student achievement.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, any questions or comments? Mrs. Morgan?
I'm sorry, you went through those, those goals in the beginning so quickly that I couldn't pick up on any particular one, but could you just give us an example? You've, you listed your goals, but you, could you give us an example of, of a plan you have to achieve one of those goals?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, specifically around, um, increasing student achievement, particularly on professional development, um, on differentiated instruction. So one of the big components is how exactly in a classroom a teacher works. Um, one of the, one of the things we're going to be getting in terms of professional development is continued use of, um, a small group instruction, and how do you do that from kindergarten through eighth grade, where teachers have the opportunity, uh, throughout the school day to work with four to five students that are grouped based on their ability levels, um, and, and to give targeted intervention based on weekly assessments. So fine tuning that and very much making sure those weekly assessments happen on a, on a computer that give immediate feedback to teachers, that they, they use, teachers spend most of their time, uh, plant, planning in, in terms of rather than assessing, if that makes sense or whatever. So that would be an example, is specifically how to manage that classroom to make sure that you can do that with eighth graders or kindergartners, uh, so that they can move in a way, uh, that allows you to specifically focus on those students. So that would be, that would be one example.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. It sounds like you do have a recipe for success. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Pivot Charter School with Mr. David Yarborough, Dr. Angela Combs, and Ms. Joy Moore.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins and board members. Um, I'm Joy. I'm the president of, or I'm the principal of Pivot Charter School.
I'm, um, Angela Combs. I'm the director of schools.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins and board members. My name's David Yarborough. I'm the board chair.
Welcome. Thank you.
Pivot Charter School is a, is six through 12 charter school. It, um, we run just, I usually give the explanation that we run just like, uh, district school, just on a smaller scale. Um, so we run all the classes. They switch classes. They're in, um, smaller classrooms for core subjects, so they can get more one-on-one attention. And so that's, that's how I like to explain it to people that are coming in and saying what is Pivot Charter School, because it's not a credit recovery school. It's ran just like the district schools, just on a smaller scale. And we're here to talk about our school improvement plan and what we want to do to increase the scores. Um, so some of the things that we'd like to address for, for next year is add some boot camp-type classes, um, which would be finding those kids that are on the lower scale that, that score le, lower levels, and put them more in like a, a boot camp-style, uh, class that does, for instance, take math. And we break that down into a more intensive math-like, um, strategy, and so they can get more one-on-one attention, and so they can, they can do extra, more and more exercises and take them out of the bigger class, so they can get more attention. Um, we're going to move, uh, math into more of a book-based classroom, uh, for math and English as well, to try to increase those scores, uh, because, uh, if you don't know, uh, we do some computer classes and book classes, so we have the true blended model. So it's going to work better for our, for our population of kids if we put those core subjects, uh, book-based. Um, we're going to add writing across the curriculum. Uh, we're going to get some additional tutors and, uh, teaching assistants to help out those teachers, so we can make those smaller, uh, tutoring sessions for the kids to help them, and, uh, additional focus in response to the intervention for our 30% ESE population, which is pretty high for the, the small enrollment that we have to work with. Improving literacy, we, we want to, like I said, mentioned in the first, uh, slide, do a writing, um, some writing skills, work with the students more on their fundamentals of writing and get them back up to where they need to be, and, uh, work on a program called PEG Writing. And this program allows the students to write within this program, and the program itself grades it and underlines things to help them change, and so they can see right there when they're writing, what doesn't fit, what needs to be changed. And so they also have the teacher helping them, but then they can also see this and go back in, and it grades them on levels, a level three, a level four, a level five, what that writing looks like. And so we're going to use that program to help increase their writing, to hopefully increase their writing scores. Um, for literacy, we also, um, are going to, we've been using Reading Plus. We're also going to use, uh, the Reading Rewards Program and some daybooks to help increase, uh, ELA and reading scores. And additional, uh, reading sessions, and we're going to take the level ones and level twos and break them down into smaller classrooms and focus them, um, where their reading level is, and, and start there, and then help them build on that reading level, instead of thinking everyone's on the same reading level in a class. We want to pull out those ones and twos and focus on lower-level reading and how, and different things that they can do to improve their own reading skills. Improving mathematics, yeah, um, we went over some of those things. It's all across the board, too. Going into smaller groups, working on boot camps, pulling them out, focusing on, you know, the Algebra I test, because that's one that they have to pass for graduation. Of course, we want them to do good in geometry and Algebra II as well. Um, but we want to be able to help them focus and, um, and get their test scores up. So smaller group setting, one-on-one, and implement an intensive math class for those that score in the, on level ones and level twos. Science, uh, we're going to use, uh, Study Island program and, uh, tutoring, study, Study Island is a supplement program that you can pull, um, uh, for like the lower-level kids. It has some games in it where they can learn in games, and then if they reach a different, certain level, they get like a pizza party, or they get something. It works well for the middle school kids to help them and, and have fun and help them learn and retain. Middle school kids retain more by, you know, games and hands-on activities and things like that. Um, and boot camps again across the, you know, those will start two to, two to, about two months ahead of time before we know that testing's coming out, just to get those kids prepared on that. Want to talk about this one?
Um, one of the things with our school improvement plan, uh, for 16, 17, is that we, we saw this early on, and we started a lot of these changes last year. Um, most of the boot camps, most of the EOC, um, the, the practice workbooks, the, the different supplement programs, these have all been in place. Um, and we've shown, we've been working for the past few days on our, our school grade, and we've shown that we are really hoping, uh, that we're showing enough improvement to come up two-letter grades. So we, um, we don't know for sure, but, uh, we're looking at about a 50 to 75% gain, um, in each subject area. Uh, it's the, um, one of the things with Pivot is that we work a lot with the homeless shelter and the foster children. Uh, we have a lot of students that are considered at risk. That is not our full population, but we work well with those students. Our middle school, um, our middle school students do, do very well on credit recovery, and we have great success with getting those, um, those eighth graders who are still trying to earn those sixth and seventh grade credits, um, getting them caught up and getting them into high school where they need to be. Um, we, we, we also, one of the issues we had last year was truancy. Um, and so we focused really, really intensely on getting these students the, the help they need, to get them in the SNSFANS programs, uh, which is Children in Need of Services, Family in Need of Services, uh, and getting them help, uh, early on. Uh, the, one of the things we've worked on is what we call the Pivot Promise, and it's a character development. Um, a lot of our students, um, they, they come to us with, with, with needs that are a little larger than just academic, and so our approach has always been kind of a holistic approach, um, that we want to make sure that they have that sense of belonging, um, they have a place to call home, um, and, um, that we, we can, we can keep them as long as we can to help them be successful.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Board members, yes. Mr. Toyber.
When you say smaller class sizes, you say smaller class sizes, then you go even smaller when you broke them down. Typically, how big are your class sizes generally?
Um, usually we find that in the, like, math, algebra classes, and, and the math classes tend to be a little larger, uh, according to our enrollment. They can run, you know, somewhere, get up to the, somewhere between 20 and 25 kids. The geometry class this year was around almost 30, and that's just, as we've, as I've found, and I'll be going into my third year as principal at Pivot, um, a lot of kids don't do well in math, and so they save it as they go, and then they try to catch up when they're getting ready to graduate. And so those, those classes can get a little bit bigger. The, the smaller class size that we do, like in the boot camp, are those that scored ones and twos on their test, so we can give them more, in a, in a smaller atmosphere, the kids don't feel so intimidated by the other kids that can work faster or understand it. So when you put them in a smaller room with one teacher and other kids that are, are like them, then, then they learn better, they focus better, they help each other out. Um, and we've seen great success with that, as, as Angela, um, touched on just briefly. I mean, I've been going through the scores every day, trying to figure out what they are, and, and we do have some gains, and we did implement that towards the end, right before testing started, you know, maybe only a month, where, and it, and so far from what we can tell, it should, it provided gains to the students already.
In those small groups, what we do is we, 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 we have the luxury of being able to keep our students till about 4:30. A lot of the parents like that. And so in the afternoon, those students that are in those classes of, of 20, 25 students, uh, we can pull them, and they can actually work one-on-one or one-in-four, usually with a, with a teacher. Um, next year, we're going to have four people on our campus that are certified in math, and math's really hard to find, so, because we know by looking at our scores this year that that's our weakness. Um, so, so usually the small groups, they, we try to keep them, our ideal number's about 17 students, so.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, I, I had the privilege of attending your graduation, and I just wanted to, uh, comment on two things I noticed. One was the obvious great affection that the students had for the faculty, um, very expressive, and the other thing was the camaraderie. I mean, they were, they were there for each other, um, and the staff was there for them, and they were there for the staff. So it was, it was something to see. I was, I was very, very impressed by the, I don't know, the heart or whatever you felt at that graduation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Any other comments, board members? Uh, what is your enrollment?
The enrollment at the, at the top of the last, um, FTE was 207.
207. So then, when you are breaking the kids into smaller groups, are you going to have to hire more staff? Is that part of your plan?
No, not usually, uh, because we have, we kind of run the two sessions.
Okay.
Yeah, we run two, two five-hour shifts a day, and so some of our students, like, they may be there from 8:00 to 9:30, and then some students come in the 9:30, and so we can push them into the afternoon. So the classes stay pretty small.
Good. And, and I'm glad to see that you're also attending to the other needs that the kids bring, because I, I've visited Pivot and seen, um, that you have some kids with challenges. So, uh, thank you for taking those efforts and working with Lutheran Services.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you very much. Okay, and next on the agenda is public comment. Do you want to address the...
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this briefing, this meeting's agenda. The subject of comment is limited to the items on the agenda. The time allotted per speaker is three minutes.
No cards? Is there anyone, anyone in the auditorium who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to board members' comments. Mr. Toyber?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a couple of things. I attended, um, the Horizon Council, and, uh, as was mentioned by one of our, one of our advisory council meetings, we had the, uh, head educational person from Google was asked to speak. Um, and there was a remark, remark, a marked, uh, impression that he left with our business community, basically saying, you know, can you get him to our district? Can you get him to our district? And I already spoke to Dr. Atkins about it, because he already has spoken at Brevard. All you have to do is ask. Um, he is, um, he's an amazing speaker, and he talks about, um, a lot of things that are, that are just not being discussed in public education. Um, you know, they ask the questions, the, the standard-type questions is what do you see, you know, he's starting up a school in Arizona, and they said, you know, what do you see as an ideal school, you know, in 10 years from now as things continue to evolve? And his answer was that, you know, it's not, I, I don't know, because it's not, it's not something different. It's the same thing we're doing now, just with continuous improvements and iterations. So, you know, he, he mentioned about how Google, um, that the Google you're using today is not the Google you used last month, because they do, you know, between 100 and 200 updates every month, and if you don't like something in Google, you Google Map or whatever, you know, you, you just put in a request, say what you don't like, because people, real people actually read that stuff, and then real people actually bring it to the engineers to incorporate it in their changes, and they budget for it, and they change. it in their changes and they budget for it and they change it. So they do listen. So, you know, all these things, the work platforms that we have for education, they're, it's designed and run and improved by teachers. The teacher input that, you know, if we can get a message out to all our teachers, if you're using that Google platform and the Google works and the word that we're using and there's something you don't like, take the time and write, you know, write a comment on how to fix it and they'll take it under consideration. I mean, they really want to know how to make it better and it's driven by teachers. It also was very interesting of how he spoke about, he made the inquiry, he said, how many people know the first four presidents? And he said, and you call on somebody and the other people just laugh at the people that don't know it because most, a lot of the people don't know it either, but they weren't lucky enough not to get called on. But, and he said, but if I were to ask you and give everybody two minutes, everybody would know it because what are you going to do? You're going to Google the answer. So the point is, is that the information is not as important anymore, but how do you use it? He said, the better question to pose to the students is what difference would it made if Van Buren would have been the first president and take succession over before you had, you know, Washington, Madison and Adams? And once you know those questions and you understand the reason, the implications of what each president brought in order, you'll know now the first four presidents or first six presidents because, but you'll know it in a more pragmatic and meaningful way. In other words, it's the pragmatic thinking that we need to develop and the questions we need to ask. And he, it was very enlightening. So I encourage the board, and I already spoke with the superintendent, to actually, if nothing else, to bring him, to have him speak to our principals. Because, you know, it kind of starts there with that type of mindset with our leaders to actually see that paradigm shift as far as how we teach and it becomes more and more applicable as we're developing our standards. I, as well as all the rest of the board members, attended a host of graduations. All of them were exciting and it was kind of the highlight of our, of our time on the board when we could actually see the matriculation of 12 years of hard work for our kids, the parents being there and so on. And it's an honor to deliver our students every graduation and that was a great time. And the efficiencies, every school that I attended, the staff there was just amazing and it was really great events. I attended the News Press All Area Awards for all the athletes for both Lee County, Collier, Lee Henry Glades. I want to thank the News Press for putting on that event. It was a wonderful event to really highlight our students, our student athletes. It was really, really a wonderful event. Ms. Fisher and I attended the student advisory, so I'm going to defer to Ms. Fisher because she handled that meeting with great professionalism and really got these students to get on task, so I'm going to leave that to her. And then the final thing was the foundation. We, all of us attended the state of schools. I want to thank the public, the marshal and his crew and all his things for holding a great state of, state of schools, you know, from the Lee County Public Foundation. It's an opportunity where we jam pack in as we always do, the business community to listen to the state of the schools. It was Dr. Atkins' first time and he, I think, did a remarkable job. It was, it was very well received by the business community, both at that function and afterwards. And it was very good for them to hear our message, our progress and to see that we're going in the right direction. So I was very pleased to see that and I was also very pleased with the phone calls I received after that meeting on how well, what they thought of Dr. Atkins and of the district and what he's doing with our staff and what our, what our team is doing moving the district forward. So it was very good. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber. Mrs. LaRiviere.
Well, it was a pleasure attending the graduations and what, we had a couple of really special things happen, but one of our students at Lehigh Senior High was in a horrific car accident that has had caused major damage. In fact, the day that Ms. Corey came to see him at the hospital, he couldn't talk and he, all he could do was mouth the words, "Will I graduate?" And at that time, they were anticipating that he would never be able to talk due to the spine injuries and that he would not be able to walk. And the exciting part was he was able to talk and share his story with me in his wheelchair, but he says, "I am going to walk." And that night, as they wheeled him across the stage before he accepted his diploma, he stood up. And just to see, wonderful support. And at all three schools, there were different instances like that. And very grateful for the support and the camaraderie our students do have and they do rise to the occasion, which we needed to see that. I appreciated hearing from Mr. Rist today as he was talking about the only way to really solve the problem is with education. And it made me think about the pennies for community progress and the importance that showed the brain and showed the brain of a four-year-old who's had multiple stressors in all the holes in the brain. And just made me realize we really need everybody in all of our communities to help come in and fill those holes for the students, whether it be through mentoring or reading a book to them. And along those lines, I had the opportunity to do one more book reading and also had the pleasure of attending Leadership Day at Manatee Elementary for their Leader in Me program. It was interesting to see different words, but the same concept with the character traits and initiatives when I went to Heights Elementary for their IB exhibition. And to see the problem solving and how the kids worked through with their problems and then shared those. And a thank you to all of you who helped fill in for me while I was not able to attend a lot of things, but I was at least, my goal was to be sure I was at those graduations and I made those. Thankful for FSBA. I realized there are a lot of people out there that don't even realize the capacity and we get from the Florida School Board Association. And the trainings, two, I had two phenomenal sessions that I went to that had, one was wonderful for getting our community to work alongside us for legislative issues and working together for passing some of those referendums. But I think one of the things that all of us felt impacted with was when we, and I hope I can pull it up, oh yes, at our opening ceremony, we had the pleasure of listening to Ken Forkes. And as he shared, it made me think about all of our schools. And he talked about different characteristics and things you have to do with your team that you work with, from expressing gratitude to showing forgiveness. And sometimes we get to build our team, but sometimes we're stuck with the team that's given to us. And it's important, behooves us to use those skills and those characteristics. So we do have a copy of his book for you, Dr. Atkins, I think, did you get it?
Yes.
A wonderful component. It was very good training and ready to roll for what happens in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRiviere. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, I have two things. I have mentioned to the superintendent that when I was board chair, 1415, the Horizon Council had an infrastructure task force. And the infrastructure task force worked on, well, basically they were meeting with the school district to talk about the impact of growth on our capital funding and they were also talking to their people about roads. And that committee met, I don't know, half a dozen times and it looked like they were getting the attention of the business community on the task force with respect to, yes, there really is a problem and it's not just a school district problem, it's a county problem. And then all of a sudden, meeting stopped. So I've asked Dr. Atkins, who is on the executive committee, to please raise the question of what happened to the infrastructure task force on the Horizon Council. The only other thing I want to talk about is the consortium. As the consortium president this year, I've worked a little bit with Mr. Sarah to set up a schedule and I want to run it by you because we would like to send out the invites tomorrow. But the plan is that we would invite one member from each district, each of the 11 districts, to meet with Mr. Sarah here on August 19th to rough out the district, to rough out the consortium's legislative agenda. In the past, what we have done is we've brought all of the people from the consortium together and there can be 30 people or 50 people in a room trying to work their way through the legislative agenda. So we thought we'd try to rough it out with 11 people and Mr. Sarah and then bring it to the meeting, which we have tentatively scheduled, subject to your approval, for Thursday, September 8th at noon through Friday, September 9th at noon. The plan would be to have all of the members of the consortium review the draft for them to take back to their individual boards and then we would have dinner, let's see, well, I'll go into those details later. And then the next day, what I would like to do is I would like to invite our legislative delegation to sit on a panel to talk to all of the members of the consortium. And I think the question would be, that we would like to ask is how can we be better advocates with you and your fellow legislators when it comes to some of the educational initiatives that are of concern to us? So, but I don't want to go out with that invitation until, you know, I get, you know, your, you know, your agreement to that. And then I would say with respect to details, and by the way, thank you very much, Dr. Carlin, if she's out there still. I don't see her. She's been working, she and Susan have been working with me, Susan Johnston from the board office have been working with me on this. The tentative plan is for people to stay at the Crown Plaza, for the meetings to be held here in the Kaluza Hatchi Room, and for the networking and dinner on Thursday night to be at Bistro 41. So I'm looking for your comments, reaction, whatever.
Okay. Mrs. Dozier?
Well, do you want us to come back to you with the comments because that's not anything we have to vote on, so.
No, it's not. But I didn't really have an opportunity to bring this up before, so I really would like to get comments today or by email.
Okay. Well, I think everything that you're suggesting sounds great.
By the way, Mrs. Dozier has agreed to do the goodie bags.
Oh, I did?
There you go. Yes, she volunteered.
Okay, all right. That's easy enough. You'll have to let me know how many people registered to come. I think all of that sounds good. Again, I'm going to say that it's your year, anything that you want to do is what you do. I think the changes that you're suggesting by having a smaller group, kind of to model like we do FSBA, I think that's a great idea. I think it will expedite us getting our platform done, so I say go for it, you know? That's my opinion.
Great, thank you. And I'm in support. Is Bistro 41 enough space?
Yeah, Denise Carlin actually had to call around to figure out where there would be enough space. So we're thinking that that's the case. I mean, we'll have to, we'll try to get a preliminary count once we get the announcement out about the date and ask people to respond to us.
And I really like the idea of the preliminary gathering to rough draft the legislative platform.
Another idea is Tortini's there, next Statistic Gator Bowl. They have a lot of corporate meetings there because they actually have screens up on the wall for video presentations.
Okay.
And they, Kevin Walsh could do that for you.
Okay, thank you.
I had my daughter's birthday there, so I know.
Anyone else? Okay. Is that it, Mrs. Morgan? Yes?
Sounds wonderful.
Sounds good.
We'll go ahead then.
Thank you very much. Great. Mrs. Dozier?
Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate Ms. Morgan on her achievement and joining the ranks of certified board member. I know it takes a lot of board development, going to a lot of different classes, so you were presented with your plaque and pen, so congratulations. I'm glad to have a friend on the board that has that status, so congratulations. I too want to take the opportunity to congratulate all of my, all the principals out there of my schools that I attended. Everyone had its own uniqueness about it, but every single one was dignified. Everyone was, I mean, they were, they were planned to the T and I just want to commend not only the principals, but all of the staff that I know it takes a lot of work into putting on a graduation and what an outstanding, and I compliment you because there were no hitches this year such as a venue that charged for parking and the kids couldn't park. And so congratulations to you and your team for everything that occurred this year because I haven't heard that anything happened like bleachers were, not inspected and so forth. So congratulations to you on that as well. Also during the day of graduations, I had the opportunity to attend the parent training at TICE for the dual language school. And I have a book for each one of you that was given to us by the author of, I have, I can't look at them, I have to, have to look at one. All right, this is for you, Ms. Morgan. This is for Ms. LaRiviere. She signed each one of them for all of you. This is for Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I'm going to have to get one for you, Dr., because she just was doing for board members, so I will get one for you.
It's precious.
But there were about 250 parents that attended. Oh my goodness, what a wonderful day it was. And the main focus of the entire day was to actually help the parents to become better advocates for their children. I've had the opportunity to read some of this book. It's as heart touching and heart wrenching as the lady herself, oh my gosh, she is just such a phenomenal lady and she, you know, she speaks from her heart and she's got such a history. She's been a veteran, she's a family of eight children and they've all served as veterans and, you know, on and on and on. I mean, what an impactful woman and for all of them to hear her story, her telling them how, how they can, you know, come from poverty, but they can still, they're the first teacher, the first line of defense for the kids. Great, just, just, just a great, great thing. And I look forward to us having feeder schools for our dual language immersion program. It's not going to do us any good to have an immersion program if we don't have feeder schools. So I look forward to that and they did it on a shoestring, so I'm sure that we can have, and I'm sure that there are other schools out there that are interested in that, so I'm looking forward to having those conversations. I had the opportunity to attend my regular Salvation Army board meeting and I would like to tell you that one of the things that they are focusing on is feeding our families and our children over the summer. So I was very, very glad to hear that. Also, the Edison Ford Board of Directors meeting, I went to that and for membership and education and there are summer camps and quite a few of our children will actually be given scholarships to be able to go to those summer camps that are there on the Edison Ford Estates. Let's see. Also, my very last thing, I've got some other things, I'm not going to go over those. Oh, FSBA, I attended the Board of Directors, I was going to talk about it, but I'm not, I'm just simply going to write something up and send it to all of you. But I want to express my best wishes and congratulations to all of our seniors and students for making it through another year and wishing them all the best and a safe summer. Return to us whole and in one piece, be safe. I want to congratulate our teachers for a well-done year and all of our school-based employees, our support employees that will be off for the summer. Have a good, restful summer. I know it's short, but maybe you can get a little bit revised, rejuvenated and be ready to focus and have a great year next year, but have a safe summer and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll try to be brief, but I do want to talk a little bit about a couple things. I want to compliment Dr. Atkins and thank the foundation on the State of the Schools address. I think it was one of the best that I've ever attended and it was a serious message and people commented about the accurate information that Dr. Atkins shared about how we have progressed over the last two decades with all of the additional testing and the race to the top. And so it also lent itself to introducing our Lee County standards and I think that we will have definitely continued success with the I think that we will have definitely continued success with the efforts of our staff members. One of the illustrations that Dr. Atkins used, for those of you who weren't there, was a video about a student who was a migrant worker and how he succeeded with the support that happens in schools. So, when I hear people saying, "Our kids aren't learning and we're not helping them," I know that that is absolutely not true, as evidenced by all the success stories at our 2016 graduations. Our kids are career and college-ready, and they also are people with hearts because they had a lot of care and concern for classmates of theirs and families who had experienced recent tragedies. So, I appreciate our district and school staff and also wish you a very restful and regenerative summer. Have some fun. Our Student Advisory Committee from this past year were an amazing group, and they told us at the end that they learned a lot, and they were very appreciative of the staff presentations because they felt it was important that they know how the workings of the district impact them at the school level. So, they made some plans about continuing in the future, and they decided that they should communicate more with other kids at their schools so that they can bring the messages from those students back to us. We told them that in accordance with the other advisory committees, that they will have to reapply if they want to return, and of course, some of them are on to college and bigger and better things, so they won't be. So, as we prepare to invite kids to apply, I'd like to make sure that this time we get the message out that we don't necessarily want the principal to appoint the best kid in their school, but we want any kids who may be interested, because sometimes our leaders may not be the highest academic achievers, but may have gifts in other ways. So, I'd like to see if we can afford an opportunity to students at middle and high school level who would be interested. They also suggested that we might want to have one member per school and an alternate in case they have sporting events and college tours and things like that, and they can't attend. So, I thought that was a good idea, and I told them I'd ask you guys what you felt about that. Okay, I've visited a lot of schools for end-of-the-year celebrations, and the kids are amazing, and I attended a career day at Hector Cafarat Elementary, and they had such well-thought questions about people's careers that I was really amazed at third graders. So, on to the FSBA conference. Len Forkus, who wrote the book, What Spins the Wheel, he really, he had a son who had leukemia, and he invented Hope Cam, where kids who are home with cancer or other debilitating illnesses can be with their class every day through a webcam. And this he did in 2002, before that was, you know, before we had the FaceTime and His book and his mission are lessons in team-building and leadership, and also a story of what amazing physical and mental endurance you can have when you really believe in your goal. Some of the other workshops that we had at FSBA, and they do provide us with a lot of really good education and information, they had a presentation on restorative justice and restorative practices and talked about a philosophy that goes beyond working with kids, but establishes connections, and how, when people are seen and heard, you can change their whole path. We really are, well, I'm going to get to that in a minute, but it was another validation for me that we're on the right track here in Lee County. They talked about superintendent and school board teams and how important it is to include in the communication, school staff and district and school staff and the business community. They talked about recruitment, and they said, "Is it recruitment we're concerned about or is it retention?" And overwhelmingly, they said, it was really the retention, that we lose $3 million annually in Florida to teachers who are not retained, and that we want to look at some strategic ways of providing support, allowing creativity, showing consistent appreciation to staff. And people interviewed said that the salary and the benefits were less important than feeling valued and a part of the team, and that we also have to be careful that we look for experience as well as expertise as we staff our schools, and I think you alluded to that, Mrs. LaRiviere. The one workshop on advocacy about how we can spread the word locally with legislators and re-educate people regarding school grades as not being really good indicators of what's happening in our schools, as Dr. Atkins showed the audience at the State of the Schools address. Then they went on to talk about having the importance of business partners, and there was a lot of talk that day about the half-penny sales tax. They had tools and tips for referendum successes. Several of the school districts there, Franklin, Escambia, Hernando, and St. John, recently successfully passed a referendum. They recommended a few things, a short, a short time, a short education time, and not to take eight months or a year to get it to the voters. They said you need a focused message to educate the public, like a fact sheet. They suggested putting the information on school websites because this individual school websites get far more hits than our district website does. They talked about outlining the need and the difference between the capital and operating budget, showing fiscal transparency, which we do every time we have a presentation from Dr. Decimore, evidence of our cost-cutting measures, like is indicated in our proposed budget today, and creating a citizens committee who would be a watchdog for the community. So, there is some cost, yes, but they all said that there's a tremendous return on investment. All through the workshops, there was one common thread, they emphasized relationships and caring about people, but again, it was a validation for me that Lee County is ahead of the curve and on the right track. So, for that, I'll thank Dr. Atkins and my colleagues and all of you who worked so hard to make that happen. And now, Mr. Martin.
Nothing this afternoon, thank you.
And Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, board members. I'll be very, be very, first of all, I would be remiss if I didn't thank staff for graduation of outstanding principals, and also Dr. Spiro and Dr. Bohatch and others who worked on making the arrangements. So, I attended six, five last weekend, and then Buckingham the week before, so they were all wonderful and really enjoyed attending those events. I also want to thank staff for the work today that went into the budget, and the divisional leaders had some very difficult decisions to make and still needed to be innovative and creative, and they stepped up to the plate, and I really appreciate their efforts there. The, just a couple of things to respond to. One is, we are working on our process for, you know, selecting like a construction managers and et cetera that goes through our, goes through our facilities department, which will be most likely transitioning to our procurement department. It will be vetted, of course, through the contractors, as we have done in the past, and we definitely should do that moving forward. We also will be working with the Construction Advisory Committee very closely to help us through that process, and as well, we met as a board advisory team, and we discussed this very issue, and we've got some folks that have some prior experience, Will Scott from the Financial Advisory Committee, and also Bill Law, who's got some experience in this neck of the woods, so they are brainstorming some ways to improve our process as well. So, looking forward to that coming forward in the very near future. Just, there were a couple of comments made earlier about the standards for Lee County, our school district, Lee County Standards for Excellence. Do want to make you aware, first of all, Dr. Stotsky, that, Dr. Stotsky was one of the individuals on the Common Core Validation Committee that, for English language, she did not sign off, but she does want to be a part of our project and do the review work along with Dr. Camille. She will actually want to report her findings or her, what, her suggestions directly to board members and the superintendent. Mr. Baird did speak with her last Saturday on creating a special agreement directly with her, so I wanted to make you aware of that. In addition, some of the folks that are working on this, again, Mr. Baird is a facilitator. We have like Dr. Michael Camille, which I referred to, Professor Meredith at Stanford in the area of literacy, and, you know, he has worked on major literacy initiatives across the United States over the last 20 years. Dr. Karen Hess of formerly the National Center for Assessment, and one of the two architects for the assessment items in Florida. We also will partner with Harvard University and Dr. Heather Hill in mathematics. Again, she's author of one of the most-used tools to evaluate teachers and students in skills in mathematics and a leader for the National Center of Teacher Effectiveness. And so, you know, these are just some of Mr. Baird's team that will be helping us complete this process. And I think that, the other thing, just moving forward, we'll talk more about this later, but our teachers and our school-based administrators and community will also be working with us, and I think that we'll be proud of the work moving forward. We're going to be working with the national experts in this, that will be kind of looking over our shoulders along the way, and I think in the end, we'll have not only some awesome standards, great standards, but also we'll drive down into assessment and instruction and learn a lot in the process. And that is all my comments for this afternoon.
And now, we know the rest of the story. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Okay, this evening, we will have our action meeting at 6:00 PM, and seeing no other business, come before this board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.